Illesa Turan is back from recess. We left off with Speaker Tzulahui making opening remarks on Bill 229-36 LS, as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Speaker Tzulahui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So we're talking about 229. This is to adopt rules and regulations to govern Chapter 75A of the Chamorro Land Trust Act, the law. And both these rules and that law are to conform with a settlement agreement that was entered into by the United States, the government of Guam, the CLTC, and the Director of the Land Trust. You know, I want to note that during the litigation, there was a motion for summary judgment made by the United States, arguing that there was, as a matter of law, a violation of the Fair Housing Act. But the court ruled in favor of the government, and that was a huge milestone. I mean, I'm sorry, it ruled in favor of the government of Guam and the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. In other words, it did not find, as a matter of law, a violation of the Fair Housing Act. And that it's a huge milestone because this allowed the opportunity for settlement negotiations in the case. So during these settlement discussions, the history of Guam became very important. And the land takings really became central to the discussions and central to the settlement. We can see it's very apparent, and in the Chamorro Land Trust's resolutions and their agreement with this settlement, it's because the court and the Department of Justice, which is really remarkable, were willing to agree that this Chamorro Land Trust is a restoration program. It's to remedy an injustice of the past. So I just want to thank all those that were involved in that settlement, in bringing the history of Guam to the Department of Justice and the courts, and making it very clear for prosperity the importance of this program in bringing justice to those whose lands were taken and to the decades and generations that followed who remain separated from these lands. And we've seen the impacts of this, including poverty. I hate to say, but poverty is really one of the very apparent results. So, just as a refresher, the main thing that these rules did and that the settlement did was redefine the eligible beneficiaries. And I'd like to state for the record what that is. So in the bill, it's on page eight and nine. It's an eligible beneficiary means any person, regardless of race, color, or national origin, whose land was acquired by the United States government between 1898 and 1968, or descendants of such person. Or who occupied, farmed, or ranched land for residential or agricultural purposes for at least one year immediately prior to that land being acquired by the United States government between 1898 and 1968, or descendants of such person. Except that if the person occupied, farmed, or ranched the land on or after December 8, 1941, and the land was acquired at any time after that date and up to 1950, the one-year, ten-year need not have occurred immediately prior to acquisition by the United States government. And of course, this 1941 to 1950 period describes the war period and immediately after the war period. And, you know, 1898 is describing when the Spanish government ceded to the United States Guam. And I think it's very significant that it's not only those who had title to land. In those days, title was, you know, a different reality, really, but who, and their title to the land was acquired by the United States, but also those who occupied, farmed, and ranched. Because it was brought to the court's attention that it was very important in the history of Guam that land use and land rights really were extended to many people, and that people were able to farm, ranch, to access the oceans through technically other people's property. But that this was a, this is a way of life, and it's recognized here in this act now for prosperity, and I'm very glad about it. So I'd like to make, just to summarize what was substituted in the bill for those, and I'd like to thank those who attended the hearing on this bill. Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Nelson, Senator Taitegui, Senator Brown, Senator Duane, Senator Ada. We had before us at that hearing the current chairperson of the CLTC, Commissioner Angela Santos, Angela Camacho, who was the acting administrative director of the Chamorro Land Trust. We had Attorney Toft from the Office of the Attorney General, who is the Chamorro Land Trust Council. We have Joey Cruz, Program Administrator from CLTC, Attorney James Canto, from the Office of the Attorney General, but he's the head of the civil litigation, so he represented some of the parties in the civil litigation. An attorney, Mike Phillips, who was the attorney for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, also in the civil litigation. And Pika Farin is the former chairperson of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. And so these last three, Attorney Canto, Phillips, Pika Farin, they were all very much involved in the settlement that we have received. So the substituted bill adopts a new Chapter 6A in 18 Gar, which mirrors Chapter 6. So the existing rules, we took those, we mirrored them, and then we made some changes. And we did this, instead of an exhibit, the big change in the bill says, we moved it into the body of the bill, and that was at the advice of council. And then we took and corrected citations that were kind of all over the place regarding Chapter 75 versus Chapter 75A. So as you know, when we amended the Chamorro Land Trust law to incorporate the settlement, we created an entirely new Chapter 75A for all the leases going forward. Chapter 75 governed the leases that were already in existence, and the new Chapter 75A goes forward. Just like these rules, the new Chapter 6A will go forward for all those leases under Chapter 75A of the code. We changed all the references of Chamorro to be consistent with the statute and the settlement, and in different cases, they are either eligible beneficiary or other words as required by the settlement. We created a Section 2 of the bill to make a technical correction to one of the citations in the statute that read Chapter 75, and we had to make that read Chapter 75A. Section 3 adopts the new mirror, Chapter 6A, except where it's provided specifically in the bill. And I want to thank the compiler, because somewhere in between receiving these rules from the Chamorro Land Trust and having the public hearing, the compiler actually codified the rules for the first time since they were passed back in the 23rd legislature, I think. And so that was big for us, so we were trying to make our new rules comply with that codification as well, and with her help. And so I'd like to make a motion at this time to attach some correspondence that we received after the hearing and that we had requested from the Attorney General's Office to provide, and that was correspondence between the Department of Justice and the Attorney General's Office and the legal counsel for the CLTC regarding the proposed rules and their impressions of it. So I would just like to make a motion that that be attached to the committee report. And then I'd like to offer an amendment to incorporate one of the suggestions by the Department of Justice. So that amendment has been passed out and should be on everybody's desk. But I'll wait for action on that first motion.
So on the motion to attach communications between the Department of Justice, I believe the AG's office, to the committee report, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so the amendment, floor amendments on your desk, it's for line seven, page 10, and in Section 8. We're going to add a new section, and we're going to, so we're copying what used to be in Chapter 6 of the Rules and regs. The same section, but if you can see the double underline in the middle, we're adding these words to what used to be the rule, and we're adding the documentation required by 21 GCA 75A 101.2. So an applicant, the determination of whether an applicant is eligible is going to be made based upon the application form, birth, marriage, and death certificates, and now the documentation required by 21 GCA 75A 101.2, and any investigation the commission conducts, and these rules and regulations. And just so there are no questions, 75A 101.2 requires a declaration or affidavit by the person that the person owned or is the descendant of someone who owned land that was acquired by the United States. Declaration shall include the location by parcel number, address, legal description, legal recognized identifier of the land that was claimed to have been owned. And then they also talk about other documents that might be required, and those are documentation demonstrating that he or she is the descendant of the person who owned the land. And also, and for those who used or occupied or farmed the land, a declaration or affidavit setting forth pretty much the same information. So that's what we're requiring. We're putting into the rule this additional language, the documentation required by. So that would be that amendment, Madam Chair.
So on the amendment for line seven, page 10, are there any members wishing to speak on this amendment? Seeing no members wishing to speak, are there any objections to the amendment? Seeing no objections, amendment passes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'd like to make another motion to add as co-sponsors, Senator Taitegui, Senator Chris Duane, Senator Anthony Ada, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Nelson.
On the amendment to add co-sponsors to the bill, are there any members wishing to speak? Senator Chris Duane, you're recognized. On the motion.
Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. Certainly rise in full support of Bill 229-36.
Sorry, one moment, I need to dispose of the amendment.
Standing by.
Okay. So on the amendment, seeing that there are no objections to the adding of the co-sponsors, amendment passes. Senator Duane, you're recognized, on the bill.
Sidoz Massey, once again, Madam Speaker and Madam Chair. I certainly rise in full support of Bill 229-36. And the speaker has already given the proper recognition to those who have brought about this incredible settlement, really, something that is really just so important to the people of Guam, for the people of Guam. Madam Speaker, I won't go over the jurisdictions, but I think we're all familiar, whether it be in our national government, United States, other states, islands, territories, where there are programs which recognize the people of the land. And certainly, we went through the iteration of having to ensure that this settlement agreement would uphold our program, program that is so vital to our people. You know, Madam Chair, I was, at one time, probably one of my favorite jobs in the government of Guam, the president of the Guam Housing Corporation. And it's kind of interesting, I wanted to share this story, because the Guam Housing Corporation is basically one of two entities that actually provide mortgages, mortgage opportunities for those to build suitable homes on Chamorro Land Trust property. The other entity, Madam Chair, is the VA. In fact, a lot of times, there is, for those who can avail of those benefits, the opportunity for the VA and Guam Housing Corporation to join and to actually kind of co-write those opportunities, you know, to provide mortgages on that property. As we know, because of the terms and Chamorro Land Trust property not being fee simple property, it is difficult, if not impossible, for conventional loans, of course. But my dream is now, Madam Chair, as we go forward with this settlement agreement, and what I enjoyed during the time that we had the public hearing on this bill was there was a lot of eagerness to move forward, to start providing additional resources, like what this legislature has put out for under ARP funds for infrastructure, surveys, $25 million this legislature identified to get subdivisions going on Chamorro Land Trust property. And Madam Chair, I bring that up because with infrastructure and with subdivisions and with moving forward, this settlement agreement gives us that confidence, that belief, that we can realize affordable housing for our people down the line. With infrastructure and opportunities, settlement agreements, and understanding of building of subdivisions, there's no reason, Madam Chair, why Guam Housing and other loan institutions that can be qualified can start to provide financing to people that can build suitable homes on these properties that are resilient to peril. Some dignified structure. Things like this provide for the fact that it is recognized now in law, and as we pass this bill, hopefully unanimously, Madam Chair, there's another signal to financial institutions, as well as getting more revenue possibly to Guam Housing to expand the programs and to realize the dignity that a lot of our people seek. In closing, Madam Chair, one interesting thing, I got to mention his name, Carlos Camacho, we all know him. He's one of the gurus of affordable housing. During this case and during the issues surrounding the opportunity to enter into settlement agreements, it was that interesting note that he made to Guam Housing Corporation and other individuals who followed this, Madam Chair, that the VA actually required, actually required underfinancing for those who were availing of this program, one of the requirements was to be eligible. Isn't that incredible? You had this entity of our national government that affords benefits to veterans and financing for mortgages on properties such as Chamorro Land Trust, and it actually was one of the requirements under that financing. It was a strong element to the case, just knowing this, Madam Chair. It was a recognition by our national government, upholding almost in terms of for the purposes of financing, the fact that those properties in the inventory of the government of Guam for eligible recipients, one of the best loan programs in our nation under VA. So in closing, Madam Chair, this bill, I think, is more a recognition on adopting the rules and regulations and complying with our settlement agreement. It's much more than that, in my opinion, Madam Chair. It's an opportunity going into the future for those who we've been trying to help for decades. It is another solid representation of the viability of this vital program, particularly for the most needy in our community and our people. Sidoz Massey, Madam Chair.
Sidoz Massey, Senator Duane, Senator Taitegui, you're recognized.
Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak briefly in support of Bill 229. Consistent with public law 35-112, also introduced by our speaker, and the settlement agreement between the US government and the government of Guam, Bill 229 seeks to update the rules and regulations governing the administration of properties under the jurisdiction of Chamorro Land Trust Commission to avoid further litigation while maintaining the spirit of public law The term "native Chamoros" was changed to "eligible beneficiaries," "Chamorro homeland" to "Chamorro Land Trust property," and "program eligibility language" from "any person who becomes a US citizen by virtue of the authority and enactment of the Organic Act of Guam" or "descendants of such person." Two, say eligible beneficiary, which is defined as a person regardless of race, color, or national origin. Madam Speaker, Public Law 12-22 was enacted in 1975 to advance the well-being of the Chamorro people by way of eligible land distribution, protecting and ensuring Chamorro homelands are awarded to native Chamoros for three types of lease programs, which are residential, agriculture, and commercial. Madam Speaker, with this measure, I recognize there are those among us who had to take a few steps back as the Chamorro Land Trust Act was revised in accordance to the settlement agreement. The litigation involving the Land Trust threatened not only the future of this critical program, it potentially jeopardized the lives of thousands of families who, without the Chamorro Land Trust property they were issued, had and knew of no other place to call home. In closing, Madam Speaker, Dr. Michael Bubakia, in a write-up on the late former Senator Angel Santos, reflected on the important work Senator Santos carried out, which led to gradual return of excess federal properties and which allowed many families to build homes, grow crops, and raise livestock on Chamorro lands. Madam Speaker, as we move forward with Bill 229 and strengthen the Chamorro Land Trust, may we remember always the conviction, the perseverance, and the heart of those before us, including Senator Santos, who understood the unbreakable connection between our people and the resources we've been blessed with, including land, our land. I thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank my colleagues to please support this bill. And I also like to thank the sponsor for including me as a co-sponsor of this important, important legislation that connects us to our land. Sidoz Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sidoz Massey, Senator Taitegui, are there any members wishing to speak on this bill? Senator Joanne Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I wasn't able to make comment earlier when the motion was being made to place this bill on the session agenda, but I'm going to make those comments now in relation to the bill being placed on the agenda. And certainly, I have no objection and very supportive of this legislation being passed. I certainly recognize the importance and significance of this language that's been included in this bill that essentially will preserve the Land Trust into the future. Because certainly, there were legal issues that could have very adversely affected the ability, from the federal view, of being able to implement a Land Trust here on Guam for our people, so I recognize that. But what is also of concern to me, Madam Speaker, is the process under which bills, including this one today, is being placed on the session agenda for discussion. I do know the legislature has taken steps forward in ensuring public disclosure, and I appreciate the efforts of our good speaker in publishing session agenda so that members of our public, of which we represent, will know what is on the session agenda, what is going to be included in our discussions here on the floor. But I think we need to take a bigger step, and we also need to include, to make sure that the information is available to the public so that they do know what we are deliberating on, and they know what the discussions are, not just in the public hearing and the public hearing report, but ultimately, what do the committee members vote on, what do they recommend, what amendments do they have? So that when legislations such as this bill, Bill 229, appear on the floor, they can be engaged to whatever degree they want to be with regards to their position, their view, their interest, in what matters are being discussed on their behalf. Short of doing that, Madam Speaker, we're denying our people the opportunity to know what we're discussing on their behalf, and I think that's something that's not very good. I think it's wrong, quite frankly. And so I would hope in the future, colleagues, to comply with our previous public law 3634, and even the break we had earlier, Madam Speaker, because we ourselves here could not upload the committee report, because the committee report was not on our website prior to the motion even being made to place this on the session agenda. So I'm hopeful, colleagues, that we will work to complying with the laws that we pass and set the example for our community. I'm aware that the Attorney General has also recently been doing orientations with regards to the open government law and public disclosure and public notice with our government agencies. And we're the house that passes this legislation. And I hope that we make every effort to be as open and transparent and accountable to our public by ensuring that this information is available for their access, such as this bill, this very important bill that we are debating and discussing today, so that they have an opportunity to know what we're discussing on their behalf. Because I know there are members of our community that are very, very interested in this particular bill and where it's going to go, and what are the members of the legislature going to do with regards to it. So I'm asking all of you, colleagues, particularly committee members and committee chairs, to be mindful of that, because we're falling short with regards to public notice. The good sponsor of this bill has been very good in publicly publishing committee hearings that is not consistent with other committees here that simply think sending out a press release to the media on the fifth day and the second day meets public notice. So I'm just putting that out there, colleagues, to be mindful of that, because again, if we expect our government to be accountable and transparent, as we so often talk about, we need to practice that as well. And with that, Madam Speaker, I do rise definitely in support of Bill 229. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Are there any other members wishing to speak? On the bill, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 229. And in looking at the history of the Chamorro Land Trust, I think it's really important that the court recognized that there was an injustice done to the Chamorro people by the taking of their land. And I think really, to really address this injustice, it's important that our lands be returned. But putting that aside, for lands that are currently held, I think this is an important piece of legislation that withstood the test of time and needs to be supported. that withstood the test of time and needs to be supported, continually supported. And at the public hearing, it was very heartwarming to hear that, you know, we can implement this act and that it's of utmost priority to do that. The legal counsel for the Chamorro land trust even promoted that, you know, we have the resources within our own agencies currently to locate the ancestors of these lands and to find and help them achieve some sort of closure. And I would wholeheartedly support those efforts. And I'm looking forward to any roundtables in that regard. So I think, yeah, so I rise in support. This is Massey.
This is Massey, Senator Perez. On the bill, Bill 229-36. Speaker Terahy, you may close.
Thank you. I wanted to thank my colleagues for standing in support of this bill and for recognizing the importance of this measure and the settlement and the Chamorro Land Trust Act itself in the lives of the people of Guam and for future generations, and I'm most excited about that. You know, I think we are facing a very serious, you know, issue with the cost of living on Guam, you know, the brain drain that we have, we are also facing because of, you know, the types of jobs that may be available versus those that are available elsewhere. And the cost of living and other factors that are causing our our young people, educated people, skilled people, all of the people of Guam at that age to consider living elsewhere. And I think this is one of the programs that we can use to, you know, give them a place to stay, to call home, as it was originally intended back in 1974, I think, is when the law was originally passed. And I want to, again, give credit to Senator Paul Bredalio and the other senators of the 12th Guam Legislature for the vision that they had and the boldness that they had back then to do that. And I think they knew back then that this law might be subject to challenge. And maybe we know it may always be subject to challenge, just as some of our laws that are really cutting-edge are. And, but they were bold enough to pass this, the senators of the 12th Guam Legislature. And then since then, we had a, I was so fortunate to be part of, when the Nashon Chamorro took it upon themselves to educate everyone on Guam, leaders, everyone, as to the Chamorro Land Trust Act and to demand that it be implemented and to, in the end, camp out up at Adalup. I think Ed, our Sergeant Varmus, was there at the time as a young child. But they were leading us to demand implementation of this act, you know, led by Ed Beneventi, Angel Santos, and other members of the Nashon Chamorro. We went to court. Mike Phillips, me, Mike Bredalio at the time, now a judge, but, and our former Speaker BJ Cruz, he was the judge at the time. And so, so many things have happened over the course of history regarding this land trust act that I'm just so grateful to be a part of this today. That, I remember I was legislative counsel when then-Senator Angel Santos brought what I had never seen at the legislature. An unprecedented amount of people packed the halls of the legislature back then to demand implementation of these rules and regulations in a way different than actually what had been recommended by the commission at that time. And so Senator Santos had taken it upon himself to, you know, rewrite those rules and get them passed. And, but never has any of this been done without the support of the people of Guam. And I'm so in admiration of the way Senator Angel Santos, Ed Beneventi, and those before us, Paul Bredalio, were able to get that information out to all the people and bring them along. And I think that was so crucial and very important and changed history for Guam. When the Chamorro land trust was impaneled by the Governor Joseph Adda back then, I talk to the governor nowadays, and we always talk about that, how, you know, we were on opposite sides of the lawsuit back then, but he's like, you know, I'm glad you won. And so I really admire that as well, because everyone recognizes the importance of that. Back then, it was the Attorney General was Elizabeth Barrett Anderson. But when she became the Attorney General again recently, it was her who defended the lawsuit and brought us, you know, led us into this settlement agreement. So just, the history is really remarkable. I am very grateful, again, that we are able to do this and that we, that history was so important in the settlement itself. I also think that's historical in and of itself, that the history of Guam is now recorded in this act at the demand of the federal government, the Department of Justice, and the court system, that we are going to show this, that the land takings had an effect on the people of Guam. We recognize that as an injustice. And we are going to expand this program to make sure that we restore all of those who were affected. Of course, in 1995, they opened up the application period, and we have that infamous 1995 waiting list, unfortunately. You know, that's the downside, and that's the stuff we need to work on. And the different commissioners and directors have been working at this over the years. But we have no more time left. We've got to make the big shift now, and we've got to make the shift so that the lands can be distributed and that, as my colleague discussed earlier, with the help of the Guam Housing Corporation, that actual houses can be constructed, you know, with dignity and a dignified place to live. We were able, well, previous legislatures were able to implement some commercial rules and regulations to assist the land trust in these efforts. I think through our oversight, we've been able to get the land trust to prioritize tracts of land that might be available for housing, prioritize those, you know, over everything else to get distributed, and to point out those tracts of land that require that if we could get water and sewer immediately, that we could have hundreds of places for people to live. And so then, we sent that request for ARP funds with the support of all of us here, that ARP funds also be used to bring that water and power out to these areas. I mean, sorry, water and sewer. We've recently, with the help of the Appropriations Chair, just slightly increased the budget of the Chamorro land trust in order to allow them to hire, I think, one more person or two more people to help them to get these large tracts of lands managed, divided, everything that we need to do with them. And then we've recently, in here, and I'm very proud of this, changed the way they do the leasing of submerged lands. And I think that opens up a great potential for them as well in regards to infrastructure and surveying of these properties and getting that water and power, I mean, water and sewer that is so crucial to living. And again, you know, we know the applicants themselves, those Chamoros, those people of Guam who had suffered land takings, who need this land to build their families, to give them a safe place to live, they are the ones who've been waiting. We have new generations who we really should address as well. It's critical to address them as well, or we will lose them, and we can't afford to lose them. So we work hard as government side to restore trust and efficiency to this program that is very much needed after, you know, decades of, you know, kind of fumbling, despite very good efforts, I would say, by commission members. It's just been very difficult. It's kind of a disconcerted effort. And so we're going to try again, and we are trying again, to get this to be concerted. And so I want to thank my colleagues for the support of this bill. I want to thank again those who were involved in that settlement agreement, those who have always been involved in supporting the land trust for the vision that it brought to the people of Guam and the potential for living, the potential for access to affordable housing, safety, and allowing these families to commit to stay on Guam. I want to thank all of you. And I humbly ask my colleagues to support passage of this Bill 229-36 as substituted, and I move to place the bill, Madam Speaker, as substituted into the third reading file and amended on, as substituted by the committee and amended on the floor into the third reading file.
On the motion, hearing no objections, motion passes. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept Bill Number 8336-COR as substituted on the floor, which is introduced by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier Barnes and co-sponsor myself, which is an act to amend subsections 5101, 5104, 5107, 5109B, 1F, 5109B2, 5109C, 5112, 5114C, 5114E, 5114F, and 5118, which is to repeal subsections 5114H, 5103, and 5105, and to add new subsection 5119 and 5120, all of Chapter 5, Title 16, Guam Code annotated. This is relative to the size, weight, and load limitations and restrictions of certain vehicles. Madam Speaker.
On the motion to accept substitute version of Bill Number 83-36, hearing no objections, motion passes. Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to resolve to Committee of the Whole for the purpose of deliberating Bill 8336-COR as substituted on the floor, and that you, Madam Speaker, as acting chair of the committee, chair of the committee as a whole, and the Department of Public Works and their representatives. Madam Speaker.
On the motion to dissolve into the Committee of the Whole, hearing no objections, there's an objection. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. We will take a brief recess to prepare for the Committee of the Whole. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the Clerk via email, 36gl-session@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be ruled out of order. Rules of engagement for this Committee of the Whole are as follows. There will be three rounds in the Committee of the Whole. We will have two rounds for questions of the panel, with each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses from the panel. Time to speak may not be yielded from one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question, and may not later speak even if all the time yielded was not used. After the completion of the two rounds of questions for the panel, the panel will be excused. The third round will be for amendments or comments to the bill. After we complete discussion of the bill, I will allow for the sponsor to close and entertain a motion for recommendation by the Committee of the Whole, followed by a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole. Today we are entertaining--
Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask a question with regards to the rules you relayed, because when we normally discuss a bill on the floor outside of the Committee of the Whole, we have 15 minutes to either question, deliberate, whatever the case may be. Under this Committee of the Whole, we're limited to five minutes and three rounds. Is that something imprinted somewhere in our rules that limit it to that? Because it seems to be an unfair exchange that we come to the Committee of the Whole so that we have government officials perhaps as today that we can ask questions of, but then that eats into our time to be able to comment, as we had earlier with another bill. So I wanted to ask that, because it seems an unfair exchange that in order to get information, we're penalized on the floor in being able to comment on a particular piece of legislation. It's inconsistent to me.
These are not outlined in the rules. This is the rules of engagement for this committee in the Committee of the Whole. We have five minutes per round, that's three different rounds. You can question and comment during each round. So during the first two rounds--
Could I ask consideration of the body if, perhaps in the third round when the public officials take their leave, that we extend the timeline so that we're not penalized by going in the Committee of the Whole to ask questions, and then not be able to publicly respond or have comments on a bill? It seems very unfair.
So is that a motion, Senator Brown?
Yeah, I'm making that motion. Just in all fairness, be it this or any other bill, it seems, because now that we know we're restricted from going back on the floor and deliberating at 15 minutes, I just want a sense of fairness in how we're going about getting information and then taking that and being able to formulate and comment on whatever position any member chooses to make.
Please state your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the third round timeframe to up to 15 minutes for members to either ask questions, amend, or, well, not ask questions by then, I guess, they're either amending or commenting on the bill, so that there's fairness if you're not going to allow us to go back on the floor and be able to comment on the bill as any other bill that's not in the Committee of the Whole.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to make an amendment to that. I believe what was mentioned was the third round is for any amendments.
For comments and amendments.
Yeah, so I'm, maybe if the good author of the motion, that we have the second round, because in third round, that's when they're left, they leave, but the third, second round that we have that 15 minutes, unless we use that third round for amendments and still allow the 15 minutes while they're still in our presence? Can we take just a short recess to--
A one-minute recess. (pause) Committee of the Whole is back from recess. Senator Taidegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, after having some discussion with my colleagues and who support this, I think I'll just withdraw that amendment to her motion, I mean, if that's what we're calling it, and just allow the Senator Brown to continue with her motion. Please state your motion, Senator Brown.
I would like to make a motion to extend the third round to 15 minutes for members to either make amendments or make their public comments with regards to the bill. I'm sure not every member's going to use 15 minutes, but in all fairness, we have 15 minutes on the floor to comment on a bill, but we're highly restricted in the Committee of the Whole when we're here to get, you know, additional information from respective officials.
On the motion, hearing no objection, there is an objection. All those in favor of extending the third round of question, of comment and amendments to 15 minutes, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We will begin with the first round of questions for the panel, beginning with Senator Taidegui.
Madam Speaker, I mean, Madam Chair, if we can have the, well, hafide, gentlemen, thank you for being here. Let's just get to Alaska, the Director. Director, based on this bill that was substituted, have you had an opportunity to review it compared to the original bill that was introduced?
Yes, I have, Senator.
What are the changes?
Sorry, Mr. Ariola, one moment while we have the Sergeant-at-Arms swear in our panel members.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, Diola firm that any and all information they provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as hell you got. Madam Chair, you may proceed.
Sadhus Mossi, Sergeant-at-Arms, Senator Taidegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Skipping formalities for the sake of time, I'm going to ask again, have you had an opportunity to review the bills, the current substituted bill, and has there been any changes?
As I understand, Senator, the bill before us here is pretty much the same bill that went through as introduced. I'm looking through it. I don't see anything that was changed. I think everything is just the same as we had reviewed when introduced.
Thank you, Director. I'm going to ask Mr. Cruz the same question.
Absolutely. We've been working on this bill for several years now, and it's a final compromise, basically, between the government and the industry, transportation industry. And so we formulated this, and besides having going through legal, and, you know, DPW just looking it over, final, it's basically been the same bill. It does nothing but recognize haul roads, basically. So there's not a lot of changes. There's no changes in recent times.
Okay, so no changes from the original bill to the substituted bill?
That's great. Well, there's been some minor wording to be determined, you know, all your procedures and everything else, so there's no other changes. No weight changes, no jurisdiction changes, nothing of that sort.
Mr. Director, there are rules and regulations that are required in here. How many, are there two separate rules and regs, you know, one for fees and fines and one for the type of weight restrictions?
Sorry, Mr. Director, before you answer, can I have everyone from the panel please introduce themselves?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Vince Ariola. I'm the Director at the Department of Public Works.
My name is Eddie Cruz Jr., and I'm basically here on behalf of the Guam Contractors Association.
My name is Hermie Keha. I'm with Micronesian Brokers, the General Manager.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. You may proceed with answering.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator. Yes, the bill provides that the DPW shall put together rules and regulations, and I believe it gives us 90 days to put the regulations. It is our intent to put all the operational and issues to include fines and fees as part of those rules and regulations.
Have you already started with that?
We had, we do have a draft in anticipation of this, because actually, you know, 90 days is kind of tight, but it is our intention to have those rules ready.
Mr. Director Ariola, can't you do that without this bill?
I'm sorry?
Creating the rules and regulations, can't you do this through the AAA process without the legislation?
I think there's some areas here, because there's some areas, because the current statute calls for certain things that are provided in, not just in the bill, but it's already in current statute, and we want to amend portions of the statute. Then as amended, we'll come out with the rules and regulations to include fines and fees.
Mr. Director, the weight stations currently operating?
Yes, ma'am.
At full capacity and 24 whenever--
Yes, Senator.
--needed. Okay, is it one or two that are--
There's one weight station.
One weight station, okay. For Hermie, right? Okay, for Micronesian Brokers, is this a company that you work, it's a company, right? Micronesian Brokers?
Micronesian Brokers, or MBI, is a wholesale distribution company?
Wholesale.
Yeah.
And it was stated here that if these things change, you know, the weight and allowing more weight for these trucks, that these companies, like your company, are willing to lower the cost because it's going to cost less for you to transport products to and from the port, you know, to lessen the cost, that this would be cost-saving measures for the public who buy these groceries and stuff. So are you saying, are you one of those companies that said that you will lower your cost if this bill should pass?
On the contrary, Senator, no. The passage of this bill, I can assure you of the passage of this bill will not make products any cheaper. The reason for that is because there is what they call the test permit, which was provided for wholesale distribution companies like MBI, that's been given the approval to bring in weights that are slightly above the current law, and in doing so, we're able to keep the cost down. But I think the opposite would be true, is if this bill were not to be passed, then we would have to revert to the original weights measures, which would then drive the cost of goods up.
Wait, you said if this bill were not to pass--
Yeah.
--that the current costs that you're charging right now, or the prices of food, commodities, anything, then if it doesn't pass, you're saying you're going to raise the prices?
No. Yes, yes, because what's happened is that we're now forced to lower the weights, the commodities that are in the container, so--
Is it one or two that are? Can you?
There's, there's one weight station.
One weight station, okay. For Hermie, right? Okay, for Micronesian Brokers, is this a company that you work, it's a company, right? Micronesian Brokers?
Micronesian Brokers, or MBI, is a wholesale distribution company?
Wholesale?
Yeah.
And it was stated here that if these things change, you know, the weight and allowing more weight for these trucks, that these companies, like your company, are willing to lower the cost because it's going to cost less for you to transport products to and from the port, you know, to lessen the cost, that this would be cost-saving measures for the public who buy these groceries and stuff. So are you saying, are you one of those companies that said that you will lower your cost if this bill should pass?
On the contrary, Senator, no. The passage of this bill, I, I can assure you of the passage of, of this bill will not make products any cheaper. The reason for that is because there is what they call the test permit, which was provided for wholesale distribution companies like MBI, that's been given the approval to bring in weights that are slightly above the current law. And in doing so, we're able to keep the cost down, but I think the opposite would be true is if, if the, if this bill were not to be passed, then we would have to revert to the original weights measures, which would then drive the cost of goods up.
Wait, you said if, if this bill were not to pass?
Yeah.
That the current costs that you're charging right now, or the, the prices of food, commodities, anything, then if it doesn't pass, you're saying you're going to raise the prices?
No, yes, yes, because what's happened is that we're now forced to lower the, the weights, the, the commodities that are in the container, so.
Currently.
So what happens is that if you're, if you're bringing in, for example, 50,000 pounds, right, the cost to bring in that container or the goods will, will be passed over through the 50,000 pounds of products now. Now what happens is when you lower the weights from 50,000 to, say, 45,000, all of a sudden, the cost is going to increase because now you're, you've got fewer products in there, and the products, the cost of the goods will increase. That's basically what would happen.
What's the current weight right now, Director, that is allowable? I mean, you're, you're talking about changing the law to adjust the weight, so what's the current one right now?
The maximum weight is 80,000 pounds.
80,000, and this bill is going to change it to what?
I believe 90. It, it's a grad, we've got a graduated recommendation in the bill for, I believe, in three, within three years, there's, there's graduated scales. And again, it, Senators, it's only on the designated haul road, which we've identified as coming out of the port, which is Route 11, Route 1, which is Marine Drive, the outer lanes, all, all the way to Harmon. We did designate, we suggested Route 8 in case there was a blockage somewhere on Marine Drive in Santa Muña, and the trucks needed to go around to get to Harmon, they would go up to Route 8 and, and then Route 16, and then into Harmon.
So currently, right now, it's at 80, and that's what Micronesian Brokers and everyone else is, you know, assessing their, their cost, is at the current one right now, right? And so it's at 80. Not moving it, the cost is still going to maintain the same, because it's been at 80 for how many years? Mr. Director, how many years has it been at 80?
I have to imagine several years, but I, the, the point being, Senator, is that the, the wholesalers currently today are trying to keep their containers and, and trucks and tractor trailers within that 80 pound, 80,000 pound limit. They can go high, and, and that's, that's not with a full load within the 40-foot container. There are some 40-foot containers that can carry, you know, another 10,000 pounds, another 12,000 pounds, and that would reach the full limit of, of the container, and, and that's the point here. If they can add additional weight and additional produce, if not meat, if not frozen chicken, within that, that container, you know, they'd be able to spread out the shipping costs to a, to a higher level of, of, of a weight limit.
Mr. Director, we've seen, I mean, many of us have been hitting potholes lately, and quite a bit more so in some areas, especially in busy areas, roadways. And my question would be, what would this impact then by allowing that excess weight? What kind of impact is going to happen to our roads if we do this?
Well, if, if you, if you, within the bill, again, the, the start date, I believe, because the bill was introduced about two years ago, the max weight that, that we would allow comes when the outer lanes of Marine Drive are fully hardened. We all know that the Department of Defense has, has a project to solidify the, the outer lanes of Marine Drive from Naval Station all the way up to, to Camp Blas. And if you think some of the, the weight limits that these, these companies are bringing into Guam are heavy, the military is going to double, if not close to triple, those, those weight limits. And that's basically the only reason why we support this bill, and we worked within the, over the last two years to come to a consensus that, that we could agree on this bill, that the outer lanes are going to be hardened, fully reconstructed, and will be able to handle, certainly be able to handle the weight limits of, of the, of the Guam businesses and, and commerce.
Can you explain what you mean by hardened?
Well, the, the outer lanes of, of Marine Drive, like I said, from Naval Station all the way to Camp Blas, they will be totally ripped up, for lack of a better word. I, I believe the design will call for eight, if not 10 inches of concrete below that. You'll have a base course, you'll have hard concrete, four inches of asphalt, and then either an inch and a half or two inches of, of anti-skid asphalt on top. So it, basically, the, the outer lanes will be able to carry 200,000 pounds of, of trucks and trailers and, and things of that nature.
That being said, are you, then, is this bill going to reflect that only our local trucks, having a full capacity, be allowed to travel on those routes that are hardened?
I, I don't get your question, Senator.
In other words, we have our local trucks who are loading up from port and then coming out to the main road, will they only be allowed to be traveling on those roads that are hardened?
The, the way the bill is written, yes, it's called the designate, we, we identified Marine Drive as the designated haul road. If, if, and if a truck were to go to, let me give you an example, say Route 4, go through Chalampago, and they're over 80,000 pounds, they would have to come into, to DPW and apply for a permit to, to, to traverse through that road. And we would have to see exactly what's going to be carried, what the weight limit is, how many times it's going to go through the, that road, and, and assess a, a charge for them.
Assess the charge? But you, you mean to allow them to go beyond 80,000? Why would you do that on our regular, you know, roads, our village roads, and cause more damage?
I'm, I'm sorry?
You said that you would still allow a truck going on the hardened path, right, the route, but if they want to take a right to go up to, like, Chalampago, you know, which is not a main?
Right.
Road, or, or doesn't have any hardened areas, and go on, that's, you know, that's going to be wear and tear on our, on our village roads. And you're still going to allow that over 80?
That's why, that's, that's why there is a, there is a penalty and, and an extra charge to, to go on, on those roads that have not been designated as a designated haul road.
Right, and what kind of damage will cause then if you allow that to happen over 80 pounds?
I, I, I can't say specifically, you know, over time, you know, when, when a truck goes over a certain road, you're, you're not going to see immediate damages. You do that over time, obviously, you're going to see some damages, I believe, yes. But, you know, we can't, we can't tell just on one trip.
Wow, tell everybody's hitting potholes on the road that they might not be so in agreement to allow that type of wear and tear. It's also a matter of inconvenience as well for, you know?
And, and, well, Senator, that, that's why, that's why the fines and the fees are there, is we take the fines and the fees, and, and, and we get the asphalt to repair it, we, we hire the men to, to go out there and repair the potholes, that's the purpose of it.
So the purpose is to allow these people to go over 80, go on these village roads, wear and tear it just so that you can fill up the potholes that, that it causes? Is that what you're saying?
No, Senator, no, Senator. I'm saying if there is a chance that a, that a heavy tractor trailer that's overloaded goes on those roads, they will have to come to DPW and get a permit. We will assess that, that truck, assess the heaviness, the weight and everything, and if it is, in fact, over, we will assess a, a fee to travel over that road.
Director Ariola, have you had a chance to receive any kind of feedback from the federal government, federal highways?
Yes, we have. We've discussed this with them several times, telephonically, and, and they are, they are okay with the bill. They, as, I, I think their, their main issue was that we keep to that designated road as much as possible, because they know that designated road is going to be reconstructed to a design and a standard that will be able to handle these heavy loads.
Do you have it in writing?
It was furnished to the committee a while ago.
I looked at, I looked at the committee report, I didn't see anything new that was attached.
Oh, boy. I can get that sent, but I, we do have a letter that came in.
Madam Chair, can we get that letter?
Yes, we have the letter, we will disseminate the letter.
Hard copy, okay, I still have a little bit more time. Ed, let's talk to you about, I know you were raising your hand up earlier, but let's talk about the federal side, because that's my biggest concern. I don't want to see us losing any federal funding regarding with our highways, and it's important that they concur with this. So I know you brought this up during the public hearing, so I'll allow you to go ahead and speak.
So, so can I first address the question you asked the Director about the other highways, not designated highways, haul roads? The, the way that they're going to allow by permit is there's mitigation ways to reduce the damage on the other highways, and that's where we go back into what they call a bridge formula, and we call, we add additional axles. So the, the, where you get the damage is on the pressure that's applied on the surface, and we calculate that by per square inch. The weights you're talking about are gross weights, it means the total weight of the vehicle. The total weight of the vehicle doesn't have as much an impact on the highways as does how much pounds per square inch on the asphalt. So by adding extra axles, you're going to increase the weight naturally of the vehicle, right? Because you're going to try to mitigate it and reduce the amount of wear and tear on the road, and that's how they're going to mitigate that. The purpose of the fines is to allow DPW for that movement of that, to calculate if there's any damage, to monitor and to change the regulations if need be. So that's all, basically fines for that portion are administrative. They're to give DPW the flexibility to make changes if they need to, or to even disapprove the movement of that load. We've got a GPA generator that's going to go up to Two Lovers Point area, coming up here pretty soon, and that's the major concern, is how do we mitigate this? Even if we did not recognize and pass this bill today to designated haul roads, that movement's going to go whether we like it or not. Now, that's why we're giving this bill some flexibility for the Director to determine how to mitigate those. And that mitigation process will also allow them to require certain other things to happen, like the hardening of bridges, they, they've got to shore them up. There may be the removal of crossarms on the traffic lights, there may be sewer drains that got to be temporarily filled with sand, so they'll take the extra weight, maybe steel plates to be put over the manhole covers. Those are the reasons why we've really designed for fines and penalties, to want, for one, to prevent damage through the penalty process if you didn't get the right, didn't acquire the permit, but also the fees are going to be to mitigate and manage the actual movement. So just don't confuse those, because there's, there's many different ways to mitigate. I'll give you one really quick example. If you had 5,000 pounds of rice that you needed to move on a roadway, and the vehicle would be overweight to carry 5,000 pounds naturally, and it would do damage on the roadways, because it only got four tires, if you took that rice and took it and put it in five different vehicles and put, you know, divided it down, the weight would then be legal. So that's the whole process of why we're adding axles and we're increasing, increasing the length of the vehicle, so it has less impact on the roadways, and it will prevent any major damage or collapse of a bridge and so forth. That's just a real simple explanation. But going back to this, you asked a question about the federal government. The current statute is a very strict statute that is basically written for federal interstate highways. We don't have federal interstate highways on Guam. The federal government now recognizes that we want to go somewhat in that direction because we have our movement of our commerce from the port to our main distribution warehouses that are, follow the definition of interstate highways, right? So they recognize by us established designated haul roads that that's somewhat of an interstate highway, because technically, an interstate highway is a highway for commerce between states, right? Am I correct? We don't have that. We don't transport amongst different jurisdictions, like here in Saipan or whatever on these roads. So we can't call it an interstate highway, but we can designate it, like some states do, they have designated haul roads within their boundaries, and that's why this is determined as a designated haul road, and the federal government does recognize it, provided we take actions and precautions to prevent the highway from being destroyed, you know, with, within a shorter span than what is determined to be its lifespan. But the Director is exact correct that the design of the, of the hardening of the outside lanes of Marine Drive that the Department of Defense is going to do, the calculations came out that it was probably around 200,000 pounds per square inch, which is like safety factor of 1,000 times what we normally carry. Now, let, let me just answer one more question. You were asking about the weight limits, and you were asking Hermie and this and that about what we carry. Prior to the current law, containers were carrying exactly what they are allowed by maritime standards. Maritime standards determine the weights that can be in a container. That's for safe, safe movement for vessels and for lifting on and off by cranes at the port. Has nothing to do with highway transportation. So the alignment of those, there was no alignment. We allowed anything to be traveled on the highways. If, if it was a big load, Public Works would require you to get a permit, but as far as weights, before our weight station came onboard, we really had no real way to gauge it and to police it. So those weights, when we measured them, when the test station first came in view or was established, it was between 84,000 and 93,000. There were a few loads that exceeded that, and so that gave us an idea of what, what the weights of the current vehicles are transported is, because the vehicles are transported, stay stationary on Guam, it's only the container that's brought in. So depending on what vehicles you place those on, that's where the violations could occur. So now we're in the process of, okay, how do we mitigate the weights? The way is to add more axles, but like you were asking, but that doesn't, does that increase the weight? Of course it does, because you're putting more of a vehicle underneath to protect the highways. So what this bill does is it recognizes that and says, okay, on these designated highways, even if we didn't do the military construction, the damage on it would be less because we have more axles, like I was explaining about the different vehicles, five different vehicles carrying less weight. So that's what we're basically doing. So we're not doing anything really much more different right now. We're getting permits from the Director, because the law already states that we're at 80,000. We're getting permits that allow us to go to whatever weight it may be, depending on how many axles we have, and they have their computation. Mr. Linden over there does all the math and everything, and that's how they figure. Now, is these weights under permits? Is it going to do damage to the road? Is it going to damage a bridge? That's his baby, and he recommends the Director whether he wants to sign the permit, grant it, or, or decline it. And that's, that's what we're doing right now. So you still have weights that are way over 80,000. It's just that they're permitted, and the reason they're permitted is because they did the mitigation process, they used vehicles that lessen the damage. So if, if you're asking me if we're allowing these to damage the roads, no, they're not, because they have more axles, so they're putting less stress on the roadways. But they're vi, bigger, bigger vehicles, and they have a harder time turning, negotiating entrance into places, and negotiating down the highway, so they must be permitted, because they exceed Guam laws as far as weight, length, and so forth. So we're not doing anything different, we're, we still want to bring in these containers, but we're going to allow the process to work like they do in the states. This is nothing new. This is, this is something that's done on almost every state in the United States. We're just trying to, to be the smarter person and say, okay, we don't want consumer prices to come up. What we want to do is we want to control anything that we can control and keep prices down. We don't want to see inflation on Guam, we don't want to see any of the other impact come in, we want to keep our standard of living where it's affordable. We don't want a brain drain, we don't want people leaving. We don't want to price ourselves out of hotel rooms, out of competition, because we, we have added all these extra costs which we could have taken care of. I just heard the Governor of Virginia yesterday say that they were going to eliminate certain sales taxes, and they were going to take other fines out because they wanted to bring the economy back, and they wanted to reduce inflation. Well, that's an excellent idea, that's something we need to consider here. How do we keep that dollar? How do we keep that dollar flowing so we keep it on island? So we allow more unfortunate families to buy what they need to take care of their families? And that's what this bill basically does. It recognizes that there is a problem between commerce. If this was an ideal location, we could have built distribution places at the port and used smaller trucks. The only thing it would have done to our economy to hurt it was it put more traffic on the highways. We'd have to build bigger highways or figure out a way to have a bypass highway. But what this bill does is it allows what was happening before to meet the maritime maximum limits on containers so we can bring in the same amount of commerce and keep the prices down. That's all it does. It truly, in my engineering background and my business background, it does not change anything else. Nothing at all. It'd be business as usual. It will actually allow the director more flexibility to do his master plan to figure out, okay, which roads carry more weight? How do we need to spend more time maintaining those, resurfacing them, uh, monitoring them? Right now, there is not a whole flex, bunch of flexibility. Uh, the current law is, is, is really strapped as far as exactly what you can do. It doesn't allow him to say, okay, we have this military cargo from Naval Station going up. And allow him to tell the military, okay, you can do that, but this is what you're going to do. You're going to put more axles on there. You're going to close the roadways during these times. You're going to, uh, pay for any mitigation that we may need to do if you do damage those roadways. I don't know how many of you guys remember when the Marines came for liberation and tore up Marine Drive right after it was redone? Tore up all the markers, ran those M1 tanks up and down the road? Oh my God. Us people that had due transportation in Guam, we about all died, you know? We just said, how, how can they do that? Well, federal government, through their law, if you really want to follow federal law says that they're exempt. So really, this, this bill doesn't really do a whole lot for them. But by goodwill, they recognize this bill, they will recognize this bill like they do in other states and say, okay, this is a compromise bill. This is what they want. This is how they want to protect their roadways. Now it's up to us to try to comply. And when they go to Congress and say what they need to do to take care of the states, Congress has got to recognize that. This is also the bill that, that federal highway's been waiting for because they want us to be responsible for our roadways. So many decades, we haven't been able to do that. We just keep reconstructing. Every master plan that every director of DPW has done basically has meant nothing. Because either the maintenance wasn't implemented, or we didn't have the funds, or we didn't, we didn't copy the original plan. We were too busy trying to take care of the traffic, take care, you know, everything else. So what this bill does is it's a step in the right direction. Makes them recognize that we are responsible. We want to protect these roadways. And like the director said, the reason those highways are designated is, I don't know if you remember the, the accident on Marine Drive in front of the governor's office where the tanker got in an accident with a dump truck and they had to reroute traffic around. When commerce, most people that have anything to do with transportation do, don't, do not want to impede commerce because it starts affecting the distributors, the restaurants, the hotels, when you start making delays. Right now with this transportation delay because of COVID and flights being canceled, you read in the news about Payless? Well, if something happened to, uh, Port of Los Angeles or something, we'd see that happen again. And I know many of you have seen stories about that. We, most recently, a couple of years ago, had a big issue with that. And most recently, we, China, we've had ships docking off outside the Port of Los Angeles. But anyway, what I wanted to stress is that those highways give us flexibility that if something were to happen, or there was a load during a traffic hour, and the director says, nope, you don't use Marine Drive. You take Route 11, go around, then when you get up to Route 8, you go around that way. Because we don't want the ITC area to overflow during rush hour. And it even gives the flexibility to determine times and how the escort's got to go and everything. So this, this is a good bill. And I've been working on this. And I, I don't come before you except for to ask you to do things which I think you guys are champions and you know what's right from wrong. And this is a bill that I fully support. I don't get paid a penny for this. I come from the Guam Contractor Association, but I only do it because I'm, since I retired. And I have a, uh, the vested interest I have is I like to eat spam, like eat rice, frozen chicken. And if you don't act on this bill, like Hermie said, we're going to go back to the law and they're not going to allow us to get permits. They're going to reduce the amounts in the containers and you're going to see anything from 11% to close to 20% increase in prices. So that the deal about guaranteeing that the price is going to come down, it's never going to happen. Hermie doesn't have control of labor costs. He doesn't have control of, uh, minimum wage. He doesn't have control of suppliers. Uh, if there's a shortage of something, you know, supply and demand, it's American dream. Uh, prices will come up. He can't control that. He can't look into a magic ball and say, oh, I got to do this for that. But what he's been gracious enough is to sit with us and we got together with this director and the previous director and we said, okay, while we're trying to work out a compromise, can we do permits? And we will comply by adding extra axles. We will comply about having more modern vehicles like Hawaiian Rocks done. I don't even see those dump trucks. They look outrageous. They look like a Tonka toy. They got all these strong arm extra axles that go down. They got all these tires in the bottom that look like they're from a Chevy van, but yet they're there for a purpose, to keep the weight low and, and to take care of the weight also. But the industry has bent over, you know? And we're asking the government, okay, we're in the same team. Come on, guys. Please support us on this bill. And we're lucky enough that the director is, he's got a smart head. He knows, you know, whether we're trying to pull the wool over his eyes. I had a meeting with him yesterday and that's the first thing he asked me is, how come this bill has changed? Well, it wasn't that the bill changed, it's the process which you guys work in the legislature, they omitted some stuff. So I think that's where some of the misconception is, has this bill changed? Because it hasn't. It's totally the same. The intent's been the same. We did adjust some weights just because people like you, Senator, are concerned and, and I, I thank you for that because every senator needs to be concerned about every government dollar that's spent.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz, the question is, is a company's really going to pass on the savings? We don't know that, number one. Number two, I think the Department of Public Works can put in rules and regulations without telling them how and what to take out. Because this bill right here tells them what they're not supposed to have in the rules and regs, how they're supposed to change it. I think, Ms., uh, and in, if you think you have so much trust in DPW, you know, putting something together in rules and regs, they can do it without this legislation. And I'm sorry, but if you can sit there and tell me that you will lower your prices if this bill passes? You said no. Will you increase it? Nothing stops you from increasing the prices. And can you guarantee the people of Guam that? I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Taidugui. Uh, before we, uh, go on to the next senator, I'll have the Sergeant-at-Arms swear in, Mr. Kobayashi from, please state your name for the record first, sir.
Lyndon Kobayashi. I work for WSP, but, um, I have an appointment as acting chief engineer for Department of Public Works.
Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and all information they provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you out.
Yes.
Madam Chair, who's under oath, let me proceed.
Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms. Senator Blaz, you are recognized. Thank you. Senator Pito Trelahi. Senator Justin Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me first start out with number one, Brimwen Ed Cruz. We met five years ago. He tried to get this bill through, but unfortunately, back then, DPW was trying to put up the hardening program because of the marine, the upgrade of NCS, NICTAM wrote. That was the delay back then. They were trying to come up with a plan. And for, uh, my colleagues, I used to work at revenue and tax and I'm very familiar with the motor carrier branch. And if you look at the bill, it states that motor carriers, and even GPD will ensure that weight limits are enforced. So that takes care of that. And other than the haul roads, that's where revenue and tax motor carriers should be at. That's the sites they need to check because if they don't get a permit, or they got a permit, they can make sure they're in compliance with this law if this bill passes. That's number one. That's number two. Number three, my colleagues, you all got a copy of this letter. Great letter. It's coming from the Highway Federal Aid Division. They offer to help pay for that upgrade of the roads. That says a lot. Number three, I have confidence that if, if, if we don't assist the businesses to move the product, if we at least can maintain the cost and it doesn't go up, that's a win. And as we continue to improve the roads in Guam, because I think we seem to forget that, uh, we can't keep demanding from DPW, hey, we got potholes. We got potholes all over the place, not just the highway, but every secondary roads. And I don't have a little car. I have a duly out there. I hit every pothole. So for many of you, the little cars you got, you should avoid them. I can't avoid them. But I can't blame it on DPW because there are trucks out there that shouldn't be driving on the roads. And I wouldn't be surprised if they exceed the limit. Unfortunately, motor carrier out of revenue and tax, there's just not enough, not enough of them. Hopefully, the, the numbers will grow and GPD will send more people to Hawaii to attend the motor carrier inspection course. And they can enforce what DPW's been chasing after so that the roads don't continue to get damaged. And with this letter from the federal Hawaii Federal Aid Division that offers to, uh, assist to fund the reconstruction of one lane, that's an edge. And I honestly believe that, uh, more federal grants will be available. And I totally support this bill. I, I was, unfortunately, unfortunately for me, Senator Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier-Barnes and James Moynihan beat me to the punch and got this bill out. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Sinagustin. Senator Rigel. Senator Perez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, the question I have is the current ability of DPW to ensure that, so what this bill calls for, it's allowing for potential increase in loads on the roads, through the haul roads, that is. And, um, in this letter that was sent to us, um, from Division Administrator of the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highways Administration, it states that reconstruction, there are reconstruction projects for a highway, for Route 1, for only one of the lanes, and it does not include the other lanes, um, as well, and it does not include, there's no reconstruction projects for Routes 8, 11, and 16. And that these construction projects are scheduled to be, to occur during spring 2024 to 2026. In addition, it states that there are bridges, though they would be looking to, I guess, reinforce the bridges on these routes. So considering that this, the enactment of this bill, I mean, the bill proposes to be enacted upon, I'm sorry, to be implemented upon enactment, and that 2024 is still away, I mean, does DPW, are they assured that they can maintain these roads without any, I guess, guarantees or support from the federal government?
Uh, thank, thank you, Senator. Again, the, um, the weight limits will increase, uh, as, as you'll see, um, later on in the, in the, in the years, starting, it actually started December 31, 2021. And that date was put in because the bill was introduced, say, two years ago. Um, so those, those dates, uh, we should probably move them back. But, uh, it's all in anticipation of the reconstruction of Route 1. And again, the only reason why we put in, uh, Route 8 and Route 16 is if there were something to hap, if something were to happen along Marine Drive that would completely block, uh, the, um, the, the, the passage of the, uh, trucks and tractor trailers. And even that, if it was blocked, it would probably, it probably wouldn't last for more than 24 hours. Um, a part of the reconstruction of the outer lanes also includes the reconstruction of, I believe, four, if not five, bridges from Naval Station to Agana. As you know, the, uh, the Agana Bridge right by the, um, the, um, roundabout there, uh, that was reconstructed a couple of years ago. So that's, that's up to standards. Uh, but we will, uh, part of the, the DOD reconstruction of the, the outer lanes includes the reconstruction of the bridges as well. So that'll be able to handle those, those increased loads.
Okay. And, um, my understanding, there was a protest regarding, uh, the road repairs?
I'm sorry?
Uh, there was a protest regarding the Performance Management, PMO, uh, for road, road repairs? Is that still in progress?
A protest?
Yes.
For one of our construction?
Yes.
None for, not that I know, not, not any of our construction, uh, projects?
There was a protest, though, regarding the Performance Management.
Oh, okay, okay. For our project management team?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Uh, there was a protest, uh, uh, we took a look at the protest. We subsequently, uh, canceled the, uh, the, uh, the, the RFP and we will release that RFP shortly.
Okay. And then, has that caused a delay in the road repair?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Okay. Has there been any consultation with GWA regarding the increased load capacity or the loads that this bill proposes?
No.
What effect it might have on the sewage?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we work very closely with GWA. Uh, we meet monthly with them, myself and the general manager. Uh, we meet monthly on, on all the issues, all the construction projects. Uh, Mr. Kobayashi here meets, uh, regularly with their senior engineers as well to discuss all the construction projects, to make sure they, they are all on time, uh, they're at a certain standard. And, uh, all of their projects follow, uh, follow our standards and our designs as well. So there's, 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 there's very good communication between ourselves and, and Water Works.
Okay. So this question's for Mr. Kobayashi. You're the engineer, correct? For DPW?
Yes.
So has there been any calculations as to the impacts of these loads on, um, yeah, what, what would be the wear and tear of the roads with the increased loads?
So, so right now, the, the project to strengthen Route 1 is, is actually under design. So, um, there was some preliminary calculations done to justify the funds. Uh, the project is funded by the DOD. So DPW has the design money to, to strengthen Route 1. So the details of the design of exactly how thick to, you know, the exact inch in depth, that's actually being designed right now. But there was a preliminary assessment done to justify to the DOD to give DPW the money to design it. And we should be receiving construction funds for that, um, shortly. So basically the, so sorry, so basically the, the design would, would be done such that the pavement is thick enough so that there, there will not be impact to subsequent buried utilities beneath that.
Can you, can you speak into the mic? I didn't catch the last part.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, so the pavement would be designed such that there will be no impact to anything beneath it. So as far as deterioration goes, um, the new design once, and, and pavement, when it's constructed, it would ensure that there would be no impact beneath that. So it would be thickened as needed so that there wouldn't be any deterioration beneath it, or impact.
So you're talking about the impact to the underground, underlying?
Correct.
Sewage infrastructure or any kind of lines?
Correct.
Okay. But as far as the frequency, so what is the, the rate of repair? You know, if we're increasing the loads, uh, potentially increased loads on the roads, uh, what is the frequency of repair projected to be?
So the, the frequency repair, I think that's, that's tough because, you know, traffic, traffic varies, right? And, um, you know, the, the traffic varies. So that's something that we, we, we have not looked at specifically in detail. But, um, but what we'll do is we would assess it, you know, every, every few, few years based on the condition we see. But, um, part of the pavement design would, would account for, you know, things like reliability, um, based on what anticipated amount of traffic that we could see.
So can, uh, sorry, Director, can you explain so that this bill, would there be enough recruitment of cost to ensure that repair keeps up with the usage and the wear and tear?
I, I think, Senator, as, as Lyndon mentioned, once the outer lanes are, are totally reconstructed, uh, I, I, I really, and I firmly believe that the, uh, the wear and tear and the degradation I really, and I firmly believe that the wear and tear and the degradation on those outer lanes are going to be extremely minimal. Again, they're being designed to carry loads of 200,000 pounds and above. I might add that we do have an IDIQ contract with a specific contractor to look at the routed roads and where there is degradation there. And I'm not just talking a simple pothole, it's a full degradation of the road that we do have a contractor that can go out there, cut out that portion of that degraded road, and totally reconstruct it to a, to actually a higher standard than that road is currently, that the road currently has. You know, when you talk about degradation, it's really hard to tell because it, you know, there's a time element, there's a weight element, there's a utilization element, there's an environment element, there's the rain, and so on and so forth, so, you know, you put all those factors in, it's difficult to say. But I can mention that the materials that we're using today are so much better, so much stronger than the materials we used in our current, that our current roads have today.
Okay, the other issue is safety. So motor carriage inspectors can issue inspection reports for any kind of violations? But perhaps the issue is to ensure that those that are found in violation are not operating back again on the roads. Have you spoken to motor carriage in regards to assuring the safety of the public?
I could tell you, just in our discussions here, the what we have discussed is in terms of once Marine Drive, the designated haul road, is reconstructed, and even today as we speak, is that all tractor trailers coming from the port will stay on the right hand on the outer lanes. There, I won't budge on that, simply because, you know, as we know, if we only reconstruct and rebuild the outer lanes, and the heavier trucks start going in the middle or the passing lane, you know, that's going to lead to their degradation, so we are in agreement, we will stay in the outer lanes, and that's, you know, unless there's an emergency or something. But in practice, that's what we're going to be demanding.
Okay, so what about securing the load itself? So let's say they stay on the haul roads, but properly securing what's there?
I, yeah, Senator, I think the industry itself, they have a certain protocol to secure their load. There's safety protocols involved. I know Eddie Cruz can talk about that, he's been in this business for the last 50 years perhaps, and he's only 45. But he's been doing this all his life, but yeah, I know there are certain protocols. Before you leave the port, before you leave the warehouse, there's all kinds of safety checks and confirmations before that truck moves.
Yes, you're correct, there are regulations, but to enforce those regulations, that's another matter. To ensure that those that are found in violation, that are, you know, there's an enforcement aspect out there that needs to be maintained.
Oh, absolutely, Senator, yes.
So the question was, have you been in conversation with motor carriage in ensuring the safety of the public in regards to heavier loads?
Yeah, from the DPW standpoint, you know, we basically catch them at the test station at the commercial port. We are able to identify containers that are, containers and trucks that are overweight. We get them to pull over, and depending on where they're overweight, whether it's on the rear axle or the middle axle, or overall, if they're overweight, a fine and a fee is assessed to them. So that'll be part of our ensuring that these rules and regs are followed.
Can I answer that question, Senator?
Yes.
So I've been in the industry, like you said, 50 years, I'm only 38 years old. Well, I won't say that's the truth, I'm lying, of course, but motor carriers' design is that they are the roving patrol that sets up shop in different places so they can catch people who violate the standards and the regulations. Department of Transportation, the federal arm, is the one that established the rules and regulations for securing loads. Those are the standards that motor carrier follows, like Senator, like one of the senators mentioned, motor carrier has some Guam police officers that were sent to school in Honolulu to learn what those regulations are and how to enforce them. And so Guam Highway Patrol does have some officers. When they rove and they recognize that, then they'll pull them over and they'll decide what's a violation. Currently Guam law, only a peace officer can issue citations. That's Guam Highway Patrol, which is part of Guam Police Department. Motor carrier does not have any arresting powers or enforcement powers per se, not by current Guam law. So the procedure is that when somebody determines that they think that there's a violation, the first thing they do is they pull them over in a safe area, then they call motor carrier. Then motor carrier, if they deem there's a violation, especially if it's something that's can't be corrected on the spot, they'll call Guam Police. And they'll send Guam Highway Patrol out there to issue the citation. So technically, Public Works doesn't rove and doesn't play policemen. It's a matter of a concentrated effort with different agencies, and they have a memo of understanding. And that's where, that's how we do this. And if you look at the safety record on Guam, we've got one of the highest safety records in the nation. It can partly be attributed to speed, but I think it's overall, the reason of it is because we're more conscious of it because of the liability. No Guam transportation contractor or transportation provider wants to have their insurance canceled. They want to stay in business, so they try their best to at least be safe enough that, you know, they don't have those accidents. So answering your question, it's all of them, and it is law, if you read it correctly, it identifies which agency is responsible for what and how they can work to enforce things. And I think that's a big step in the right direction when it comes to safety on the highways.
Yes, I'm aware of that situation, which is why I think safety might be something that we need to be up on this, considering there is an increase in loads, and that could have more repercussions. So, yeah, I do appreciate you reaching out to those entities. The other thing in this bill is the exemptions, so tow trucks, well-drilling rigs?
That mirror copies federal law. That's, federal law's written already to exempt them. So what this does is it just puts a statute in there where we align ourselves with federal law. So if you read the interstate law, the federal highway transportation law, they exempt those, and there's reasons why, is because those, a lot of those vehicles are built specially for rescue, and they have their limitations, but they're allowed to either be overweight on a certain axle or be a little shorter where they don't comply with the bridge formula. And the reasons for it is because of the type of vehicle that's needed to perform those emergency procedures. Same with a tow truck, tow truck same way. When he tows another vehicle, he violates it, for one, the overall vehicle weight, because he's now another truck pulling a legal weight truck. So those are things that we follow the federal standards for interstate, and so there's no changes in that, and everybody in every state has recognized that. So we're just trying to align ourselves on that statute, okay?
So is that in times of emergency?
That's correct.
Okay, so that doesn't say that here?
Or for, in the case of a fire truck, when he's proceeding loaded with water to the accident site or the incident site, he's normally in violation because his capacity of the water in his tank will put him over the upper limit normally, for what his legal weight is if he was a commercial carrier.
Okay, so that part was left out, it didn't speak about the emergency situation?
Well, it's kind of taken for granted, because you never go to an accident or you never go anywhere not prepared. So if you're carrying water to go to a fire, normally, it doesn't mean that, you know, I'm just going to go around the neighborhood or whatever. Usually, those vehicles don't go anywhere unless there's a reason for it. And that's why, but if you look at the wording and look at the federal statutes, it's exactly the same. There is no difference. So the feds left it out, you know, why would we want to be more stringent? We want some flexibility. And if he was in some kind of violation that's dangerous, like per se, the tanker truck that flipped the pneumatic, you guys, I don't even remember that, and three firemen were injured, we lost a big asset. It was more of a design of, they didn't put their extra axle down to carry that extra weight, and they got in an area where the road wasn't designed with a proper camber, so the transfer of weight flipped the truck over. That was the final of that investigation. And, you know, that's an emergency vehicle, so that falls in that exempted area for the first thing. But because it wasn't operated within the standards it was designed to be, that's the violation. So if anything, the government of Guam should have been cited for that violation. But, you know, you gotta have some flexibility in there. Just like, I don't even remember the ladder trucks we used to have for the high-rise. Those were all in violation, but they were built to a certain standard. If we needed back up to the Reef Hotel or somewhere and stick that ladder up 120 feet, we were able to do it. Now, of course, through technology, this more modern ways, the building codes have changed, you guys have made those buildings very safe, so there's no need for some of those high-rise firefighting equipment.
Just for clarification, so we're talking about exemptions to the pounds per square inch, or for the total weight and the dimensions?
It can be both, actually, and also even to the bridge formula, because those vehicles were designed for a certain purpose. And you gotta remember, what we're talking about in this bill is commerce. We're talking about commerce being moved. We're not talking about a fire truck just driving around. You know, they fall under a totally different standard. I remember when I ran the racetrack of Bajigo, they had what they call EVOP training, motor carrier can testify to that. They were taught how to run those vehicles, the fire trucks, the ambulances, within reason, within a certain standard when responding to an emergency. Those standards are followed by the Guam Fire Department as well as Guam Police Department. So for you to say that maybe they're overweight or whatever, perhaps. If they carried 100% of the water they're supposed to carry to get to a certain place, perhaps. Normally in the mainland, if they're working in an urban area, they don't normally load up 100% because they have fire hydrants within every 150 feet they can tap into. Guam's a little different, we're kind of like a rural area. There may be areas where there's no fire hydrants available or low water pressure. So that's why we purchased tankers and stuff. But they, a lot of those vehicles by design are bought for that, and designed and built for that standard that we need them for. Has nothing to do with this weight law for commerce. And I helped consult on a fire truck design because there's a new federal law that says that an engineer has to do certain kind of indestructive testing on vehicles to see how dangerous they were, like you're concerned with. And the new federal law states that any new vehicle which is designed for a specific purpose, such as a fire truck, a GPA bucket truck, or stuff of that nature, can exceed whatever the law says because they're designed for something of emergency purpose. But they're also limited by their own regulations where they can't go over a certain speed. When it comes to a certain area, they can't traverse on the shoulder a certain way because they might be top-heavy. And so that's exactly what your concern is, I'm sure. And it applies also to cranes. If you look at the crane zone here, they're exempt. The reason is, is because they hardly travel on the road. They only travel from one location to the other to get from job site to job site. If you look at them, the ones that are exempted are the ones that are either overweight, overweight, or they may be top-heavy. And that gives the flexibility for the Director of Department of Public Works to determine whether he wants that road, that vehicle to go down that road, or take an alternate route, or maybe try to take the weights off, some of the weights off, the boom, some of the counterweights, so that way it travels in a safer manner. So this bill addresses that. It gives him flexibility to determine that. He can deny even a license plate if he determines that a vehicle's unsafe. So to answer that question, you know, there are already laws in the books, and there's federal laws in the books. If he can't, if he can't determine something like that, or he can't enforce something like that which he thinks is unsafe, he can always go to the federal arm and say, we got a problem with this. We have a certain kind of vehicle that came from Germany and is going down south. Our roads aren't designed because the camber's wrong, or the, you know, certain issues, right? The curve is too tight, such as the trash trucks go to Lazzon. That was an issue I brought up with the director. Those vehicles are so long because they're trying to accommodate for the bridge formula that when they go through some of those curves there, especially by Talafoco Bay, they run off into the shoulder of the road. Well, our shoulders in that area aren't designed to carry those loads. That's why you see some damages going to the south on those roads. Perhaps it was a lack of funds why we couldn't design it where it had wider roads. Perhaps it could be a real estate acquisition by right of eminent domain. You know, it could be many things that why we didn't build those for that. But because of the bridges, and we wanted to protect the bridges, because we've got a history of failed bridges, we wanted to make sure that those vehicles could go across those bridges, and that's why they're so long. We were concerned about traffic, otherwise, we allow shorter vehicles, maybe three vehicles versus that one vehicle to go up there, but of course, you're going to increase traffic. You're going to increase the case of what's the probability of an accident, you know, things like that. So what I'm asking is give some flexibility to director to determine these things and to mitigate and manage those risks. And you guys, the champions that I think you are, are going to see this, and you're going to say, hey, maybe he's right. Maybe instead, maybe we need to change the requirements of the Director of Public Works. Maybe we need to make him a little smarter, or make him hire more consultants like Lyndon. If he had three more of Mr. Kobayashi, he could probably pursue, you know, a bigger effort about making the highway safe as well as designs. We're, you know, our side of the industry, we're heavy with engineers. But for us to convey it to the director, you know, he's got to take it to Mr. Kobayashi and say, hey, you know, these guys are saying that when they go through this area, there's a little bit of flexing on the highways or something. They don't want the liability of damaging the highways. What can we do? So I think that this will open your eyes, and maybe you can see that there's some shortfalls within Department of Public Works. I appreciate your comment about the safety, because that technically kind of falls in their alley. Many years ago, when they designed motor carrier, and you can ask the good senator over there, I protested. I wanted it to fall under Department of Public Works or Guam Police, but they wanted it under revenue tax. And the big argument was because they wanted to make sure the weights and measures so that they'd be compliant with the registration fees and everything else. Well, that's a big job, motor carrier's got a big, big job. Technically, if you ask me, they should have their own department, or either combined with the Department of Highway Safety, which is part of Public Works. But, you know, it just goes that we have limited resources, but we need to be able to manage these things. And safety, of course, is number one. I was the guy that investigated with motor carrier that accident on Marine Drive where the container flipped over and killed the guy from the PDM. I was the guy that determined that, for one, the container was overweight, and even took it to Hawaiian Rock and two other places to weigh it on their scales, their commercial scales, to certify that it was overweight, that the scale that was originally weighed at in Dedado wasn't calibrated properly. I was the guy that determined with motor carrier that the brakes failed because they were never properly maintained. I was the guy that determined that the container didn't kill the guy. What killed the guy was he had his seatbelt on wrong, and as the container flipped over, he tried to stretch his neck a certain way and broke his neck. And the medical examiner certified that, that it was a cause of being in the vehicle with a seatbelt. But anyway, to go back, that safety's a big job. And I hope that sometime when you go do your budgets, you consider that, when you you consider that, when you, when he asks for more inspectors or more engineers. Same with training with the Fire Department because their vehicles need to follow a certain standard, maybe drive a little slower in certain areas. Maybe he has to have a part of determining that and say, "Hey, these corners aren't designed for you. Maybe when you come to this corner, even if you're going to a fire, slow down or come to a bridge." So that's, you know, it's a big job. And I, I respect every one of you and your concerns. I, I don't, never take a question as a challenge or a opposition. I always take it as, as a way to enlighten somebody, you know, something maybe I know more or the Director knows more, or maybe even somebody in finance knows more. So all I'm asking is for you to just look at it in that perspective, and I thank you, Senator. And I'll conclude with that.
All right. Thank you, Eddie. So Director, I just wanna follow up the question about the section on exemptions. How do you see that? Do you see that as an emergency exemption or just a cart block exemption?
I think it, Senator, it really depends on, on the vehicle, on, on the rig, what's being transported, the size, the weight, you know. I, I know for a fact that just in my two and a half years at, at Public Works, the, the businesses out there, they, they know what needs to be permitted. They know what needs to be, they know what the safety issues are in transporting these issues. Because like Eddie said, there's huge liability issues. So they're not, they're not gonna go out there and do something that may cost them their business, lose their insurance, things of that nature. So, you know, I think definitely tow, tow trucks should be exempted because, you know, when, when they go out and, and they do tow something that's overweight, that whole, the whole continuous, the, the, the two vehicles are, are, are gonna have to be overweight because one, one already is. So that's, you know, and that's, that's an emergency situation. Just depends on the situation. And, and, and the way I read this, this is more for emergency uses.
Okay. To Mr. Kobayashi, so I'm looking, if you can take a look at the exemption portion and provide any kind of feedback, I appreciate that, to provide, you know, in the interest of safety.
So for the exemptions, you know, like, like, like Vince said about the tow trucks, you know, tow trucks are usually called in an emergency situation. So, you know, for the tow trucks, I think that, you know, they, they need to clear, there's something, you know, some, some car stalled or whatnot. They need to get out of the travelway to make it safe. So I think for the tow trucks, I feel that that's a-
Sorry, can you speak into the mic closer?
So for the tow trucks, I feel that they're, they're only gonna be responding in an emergency, emergency situation. So I feel for that, that's something that, you know, they, they do, they do fall in a category to where, you know, it wouldn't make sense for them to have to come in for a permit to DPW to go move a car out of Marine Drive or something. For, for the fire trucks, ambulances, and emergency vehicles likewise, you know, I think, you know, DPW could work with trying to, with the Fire Department ahead of time to see, you know, check their vehicles to see, you know, if they're fully loaded, you know, what, what are the impacts, what were the impacts there? How heavy are they? But, you know, in a, in a fire or something, I mean, I don't, there's not much time for them to be able to go and get a permit from DPW. So I think, you know, in emergency situations, I feel that it would be good to have some flexibility to allow them to go and save somebody's life sooner.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Your time is up. Can I just maybe, one quickly, one quick one? If you could just maybe have a closer look at that and provide some more comments and suggestions? I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. To start off, I just wanna ask the Director, it was mentioned that the test facility is operational. When we had the hearing last summer in May, we were made aware that the facility had been inoperable for close to a year. So when was it repaired? Why did it take so long? And I assume during that one-year period, no weights were taken at all with loads going out of the port. So can you update us on that?
Right. Yes, Senator. It was repaired sometime, I believe in, by November it was repaired. It, it took quite a while. Procurement issues, Senator. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't have procurement authority at DPW with the exception of, of construction. And it was, it, it took a while to get the, the parts on, on, on order. It took a while to get the, the company to actually come and recalibrate, install the parts and recalibrate the scale. You put all that together and yeah, yes, yes, I, I agree. We had a delay of several months. And, you know, but even during those several months, Senator, we did have, I did have a few companies coming, knowing full well that, that they were, they were overweight. And, and they, they came and advised us of that. So, but yes, there, there was a delay in, in getting that, that scale back up speed, but it's, it's fully operational now.
And since that time, are you DPW? Who's, who's operating the facility now? I know you guys were one of the designated agencies, but are, are you solely, is DPW now solely operating it? Or do you have weights and measures from Rev and Tax?
DPW is operating the test station, yes.
Do you have any reps from Rev and Tax that ever come in to participate or observe or assist?
No, no. They, they, they're out in the, the roadways.
And, and since that time, what is the status with regards to enforcement there? With regards to loads? What, what, how is the, how has the department implemented the enforcement of the loads?
Well, the enforcement is still happening at, at test station. I was about to mention that, you know, if there, there've been, there's quite a few instances that actually, rather than paying the, the fine, is they'll, they'll call their, they'll call their warehouse. Warehouse will bring another truck and they'll start unloading the, the container. They'll, they'll pull over, you know, right in the, there's a, a parking lot area by test station and they'll, they'll, they'll open up their container and start unloading just, just to get the weight down rather than pay the fee. So, you know, that happens as well, but there's the, the enforcement is still happening.
Well, I am glad to hear that. I have no argument with them unloading the load because the whole objective obviously is to maintain a certain standard. So if they're able to do that, certainly I, I think we can all support that. If you can, so it's on your time, since this legislature seems to have such a restriction on us engaging here. Can you read the letter from Federal Highway? Because this was not included in our committee report that was put online and, you know, just for our interest of our listening public, for them to know what Federal Highway has since relayed to your department with regards to this legislation?
The letter from Federal Highway?
Yes.
Yes. Basically, do you, do you need a copy?
No, I have a copy, but I would like you, if you could read it for the benefit of the public because this particular letter was not included in the committee report that was put online.
Basically, it's addressed to myself as Director. Subject is Test Bill 83-36. Impact on receipt of federal funds to proposed bill. Request for letter of no impact to receive federal funds. Dear Director Ariola, thank you for your letter dated June 14th, 2021 regarding the subject proposed Guam bill. Increasing the legal load is a Guam Department of Public Works decision and does not jeopardize future federal funds. Please note that while the Department of Defense has offered to fund the reconstruction of one lane in each direction on Route 1 to carry their heavier military loads, the other lanes on Route 1 and all lanes on the other routes 8, 11, and 16 is not currently scheduled for a reconstruction project. These routes may experience faster deterioration, shoving or rutting of the pavement due to the heavier loads. An increase in the legal load will reduce the life of the pavement, especially at the intersections. Please also note that the replacement of the Route 1 bridges within the haul road highways that will be reconstructed to carry heavier military vehicles are currently scheduled to be in construction from spring 2024 to summer of 2026. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Yours, sincerely yours, Rochelle Takara, Deputy Division Administrator.
Thank you very much, Director Ariola, for reading that. I did wanna ask, I mean, I recognize that it's saying here essentially that the military is gonna reconstruct the outer lanes from, essentially here on Route 1. Doesn't say, does it say Naval Station? I don't see it. Does it say Naval Station to the new base? Currently, I hear the word haul roads. I think we have an understanding of what that is, but I don't necessarily know there's any portion of our roadway system yet that's constructed to meet those standards. Do you have roads here that meet those requirements right now for haul roads?
No, it was, that was a definition that we put in this bill to strictly identify Route 1, the outer lanes of Route 1, as the designated haul road.
But it doesn't meet those standards at this time, does it?
Correct.
And so even though we are trying to designate it through this legislation, the standards of where those roads are obviously don't meet that requirement and are subject to deterioration.
Correct.
If we increase the loads. And understanding, there are special loads, you know, GPA's gonna have generators and things that far exceed, you know, in terms of weight and size. We understand occasionally those things are gonna come up. But the timeframe, that's quite an undertaking. I mean, I, I mean, it's, I'm very happy to hear the military is going to look at funding this because this is gonna be a substantial undertaking. If it is from the, the gate of Naval Station, as was mentioned here by Mr. Cruz, to the new base on Route 3, that's gonna take, what do you estimate the timeframe for that? That's, even if it's a single lane, that's gonna take quite some time to construct to the standards that are being talked about here in terms of thickness of the concrete and the, hopefully we've got that surface cover, the anti-skid issue resolved. Even though I've seen the reconstruction since my time of Route 4, Route 10, Route 8, Route 1016 is still rutting, even with the replacement. It's been resurfaced. It was resurfaced a few years ago and it's still rutting. So what is the estimate, do we know for construction of these, these outer lanes on Route 1? Do you have a timeframe of what they're looking at it's gonna take to construct this? Because that's, that's quite a length of roadway.
It's probably gonna be in, in the two-year stage because that's, that's a total reconstruction. We'll probably have a better idea, Senator, once the design is fully completed. The design will tell us what the construction period would, would be more accurately.
And do you have an idea in planning how you're gonna address this with the inter-construction of, of upgrading the bridges that are gonna have to be involved that need to be upgraded? I mean, like the Assam Bridge has always been a question of concern for quite a number of years. I'm sure that's the critical one that's gonna need to be. And we're talking about the bridge that's adjacent to the national park there. Do you have any plan on how you're gonna intertwine the reconstruction of these bridges on the main road and the construction of the roadway at the same time?
This is, this is without a doubt gonna be Guam's largest road construction project. It's gonna take a lot of planning, as, as you said. Give an example, there's no, there's absolutely no way we can have the five bridges being reconstructed at the same time. We have to take into account safety, traffic safety. We have to take into account traffic flow. We have to do, take into account contractor ability to do the, the project. Because this is, this is just, it's, it's just a huge project. So there's gonna be a lot of coordination between ourselves, the contractors, the construction managers, safety individuals to, to make sure that traffic flows and, and flows safely.
Is there anything beyond this letter from Federal Highway in terms of planning the actual construction and schedule for these, this upgrade to Route 1?
No, but I, I can tell you, our, our PMT would, would be totally, totally involved. I, I understand, and, and I believe, just in talking with our, our federal counterparts, that for an issue like this, they will be heavily involved as well. As a matter of fact, I, we just had a meeting with them this morning. I think we expect them sometime next month for other matters to include this as well, just to see the progress of where we are with all our projects. So this is certainly gonna, this is gonna be at the, at the top of our priority list in terms of coordinating it. Because as I said, this is gonna be Guam's largest road project and it hits at the very heart of our, our main thoroughfare.
No, I understand, but my question was, do, do you have any concrete plans essentially on the actual schedule, construction plans, design?
Not, not yet, Senator. It, we, we will await the, the, the final design for the, for the construction. And then after the, the, the design prior to construction, we will have planning sessions to actually come up with a concrete plan of, of how we're gonna do this construction, how, where, the timing of it, where are we gonna start, what side is, you know, are we gonna start on the north lane? We're gonna start on the south lane? So that's gonna take a lot of meetings and a lot of coordination to make sure, again, traffic flow and, and safety. But do we have a plan today? No, no, we don't. No, we don't. We're still in the design phase right now.
Well, I'll just elaborate in wrapping up for this round, but I, I, just understanding the schedule that's involved, I mean, the number of years it took to even get Route 3A designed, come to an agreement, have the federal government sign off on it, actual address construction, took a long, long time. It wasn't, you know, it started like almost 12 years ago. So, I mean, I, I hope to see something more optimistic because we're being asked to authorize the designation of these roadways without the infrastructure in place to actually do that, thus contributing to the continued deterioration of our roadways at this point. So I think we need to clarify that. While we call it haul roads, they don't exist right now. And yet we're being asked to designate the substandard roadway now. And you know, the major concern of our residents is just the inability to maintain roads and the damage to their vehicles and all those concerns. So I appreciate you responding to my question and we'll, we'll meet you on round two. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions on this round.
Okay. Thank you very much. Speaker Turlohi, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel members for their forthright answers. Okay, and, and so I just wanna make sure it's very clear on the record. So the substitute bill says it's going to be effective immediately. And to follow up with the previous line of questioning, it also designates designated haul road highways as Routes 1, 8, 11, and 16. The recon, even though there is no reconstructed lane in Routes 8, 11, and 16 yet, and the reconstructed lane for Route 1 is still pending. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So should, yeah. So the question that was asked previously, should we be waiting until those are done before designating them as a road haul highway? Or take them off the list and where, and allow where it says below, "Other highways designated by the Director of Public Works as they are reconstructed for heavier use." That's on page two, meaning you can designate it when the construction's completed, right? Or that, that reconstructed lane is done.
Yes.
But we should not, by this bill, be designating any of them if they're not up to par right now?
Well, if, if you look further in the bill, as I stated earlier, there, there are some set dates that, that we, where we had increases for the axle weights. And that would start like in-
Please show me what page?
The, the year 2023, the year 2024.
What page is that? What page?
I'm sorry, page 10. And we were suggesting a, a graduated increase in, in weights.
Could you explain that?
Basically, you know, rather than, than, than just have the a, a, a full weight increase of, of the, the, the truck, the tractor-trailer, the containers, and, and the different axles, as, as Eddie was explaining, at a one-time shop, we would basically graduate it and, and have the weights, the weight increases effective on, on different dates, preparing for the, for the reconstruction of the outer lanes.
But you intend that these dates coincide with the reconstruction of the outer lanes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And, and-
Can I, can I just clarify that? That's, that's why the wording says, or-
Or a higher standard.
Once, yeah, once constructed of highway standard. So just because we pass this bill doesn't mean that tomorrow, once the governor signs it, we can go out and carry those extra weights because it specifically says, "Or once constructed to a higher design standard." That's the part that protects the-
What page is that?
Page 10, about halfway down, you can read where it says that the weight limitations for the axles. Because that's the one that damages the roadways when the axles are overloaded. So that protects it on number A. If you read 2A, about halfway down the page, line 14, it says, "Or once constructed to a higher design standard." That's what protects the current roads. So these won't take into effect, the weights on the actual pavement themselves, until those roads are constructed of a higher standard. So the dates that the Director was talking about is only projected dates which we determined previously as to when the, the design phase for the Department, our Department of Defense was gonna have completed. Now, we did that, we put that wording in because of exactly what you guys are concerned with. How long does it take to design this? You know, when do we anticipate it? There's the flexibility of that. And so future designated highways will fall under the- the same pattern where, once they are constructed of the higher standard. So just to clarify that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, and then for the Director of Public Works, Mr. Arielyk. So the bill removes the fees and the penalties that are in current statute and says that DPW will do rules and regs to instigate new fees and penalties.
Yes, ma'am.
But if the bill is effective immediately, it seems then there will be a gap between passage of the law and the passage of the rules and regs, which takes some time under the AAA process. And I'm curious why we don't just amend these rules, these amounts of fines and penalties in this law, in this bill, rather, so that it's immediate and they both go into effect at the same time. Otherwise, you have this period of increased capacity on the roads, yet no ability to put fees or fines, I think even on the permits.
We could, we could certainly perhaps make, make an amendment to, to address that, that the current fees will continue until the rules and regulations are promulgated by DPW.
What type of fees and fines are you contemplating? What kind of changes are you contemplating for these amounts?
That, that's been a bone of contention between myself and, and the industry. It's, it's my position, it's our position as engineers at, at, at DPW, that if the, if the weight limits are going up, are, are going to increase grad, on a graduated basis, if the weight limits are going to increase both total weight limit as well as axle weight limits, and we've, we've agreed on a certain number, in order to make sure that they don't violate that, I wanted, I, I preferred and I wanted higher penalties. Something in, in the area of 1,500 to 1,800 for first events, 2,500 for the second offense. So that way they know, in fact, okay, they've already, they've already got increased weight limits. Let's not exceed that. You know, let's not take advantage because the government gave us additional weight limits. Let's not try to take advantage and, and, and go in there and if, if we're overweight, we'll, we'll, we'll pay a fine of $150. Now, that, that doesn't work for me. I, I think if, if, if the government is, is going to move forward and, you know, there's a lot of trust in, 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 in putting this, this bill together because it's our job as well to protect the roads. So if we, in fact, are, are going to move and, and go for higher weights, we want to make sure they stay within the, within the boundaries. And the only way you can stay within boundaries is to have higher penalties, to me.
Yes, that's why I'm suggesting you suggest those to us today and we put them in and it's all complete. Otherwise, you have a big gap and you have an inability to enforce. And we have in turn granted the ability for excess damage to the roads.
Okay.
All right. And then the changes to non-hall road highways, non-designated hall road highways, can you just explain those?
I'm sorry, Senator?
Can you just confirm? There are changes in this bill to the, those roads that are not designated as hall road highways, right? So regular roads, right? Non-highways even, village streets as we call them. And can you just explain the changes to that and how you feel those are safe for those roads?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, if, if they are, you know, and that's, I believe that the, the, the incidences are going to be far and few between, simply because the major route of, of getting your fully loaded container from the commercial port to Harmon Industrial Park is, is Route One. As I stated, we, we put Route Eight and Route Sixteen there as, as an emergency access. And, and that again would be far and few between. But if, I, I, I haven't had, at least in the two and a half years that I've been there, I haven't had any occasion where, where we received a, a, a permit request to carry an overloaded weight on anything other than Marine Drive. But if, if that were to happen, they know that the, the rule is they would have to come to DPW for a permit. We'll assess it. If we need them to, to split the load, we'll split the load, depend, again, depending where they're going. If they're gonna, they, contractors already know that, oh, the bridges already have load ratings.
Senator, there's no changes to the other roads.
That's why I want them to confirm.
Yeah, there's no changes. It only addresses designated hall roads.
Right.
Only addresses designated hall roads.
Do you agree with that?
Your question is the cha, the change and the impact to the village, the village streets?
Yes. What was the word you used?
Your, your question was what was the change to, and the impact on the village streets as far as the change in the weights?
Yes, yes.
So the weights, some of them, some of the, the axle weights did, did go up a little bit, but I believe some of them were actually consistent with, with what was in the original law before it was last amended. I don't remember what the, um, the, the, the bill number was.
There is, there is no change on any other high routes, just the designated hall highways, hall roads, rather. I'm sorry, sorry. So we didn't, we didn't address that because, you know, the concern was to protect the bridges and could, and protect the substandard asphalt pavements like you are talking about, the Gania Heights, you know, some of the village streets or whatever. So those will all still follow on the, the, the regulations that were, that are in statute right now, in the law right now.
All right. Well, it does look like there are slight changes on pages eight and nine. And then on page 11, it says maximum weight shall be 80 pounds. Is that the current? 80, yes. But no, 80 is the current for all roads? Yeah, that, so if you could just look at those provisions.
Yep.
Page eight and nine, and then page 11, subsection F. So eight and nine is that subsection A, one through four. Slight, from 34 to 36,000 pounds.
That's current.
Current is 34,000 pounds? And they're changing it up to 36,000 pounds? This bill makes that change.
Right, right. On number two.
For regular roads.
Yes.
Yeah.
Number one stays the same.
Say that again?
Number one stays the same. Number two
Yes.
increases it by 2,000 pounds.
2,000 pounds, right.
Right.
Yeah, if you could, so, so that's why I want to acknowledge that there actually are some changes to regular roads, maybe not huge changes, right? But there are some.
That's correct. I, I stand corrected.
Okay.
And then it does, it aligns it with a, a standard that we had previously developed.
Okay. And then on page 11, it, you know, 11F?
You're correct.
Yeah. So can you just explain F? How, how this changes current on page 11?
Yes, current, yeah. Currently, the, the maximum weight is 80,000 pounds and, and we're looking to increase that to 95, only on the designated hall roads, only on the designated hall roads.
And but what about the 80,000 pounds? Is that the current max for regular roads?
That's current.
For all roads? Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. And then, just again, so we talked about, I know, we talked about impact on the consumers, right? Whether, will this law create an impact on consumers? And I know that we did get testimony during the hearing that said, you know, some of the companies said, no, we're not going to reduce our prices based on this law. But it's, it's one of the factors that might help us to not raise our prices. And I guess I would just like all of you to talk about that, if that's possible, what you know about that. How will this impact consumers?
I, I think in this instance, Senator, one of my reasons for supporting this bill is we can't control all the factors going into, into retail goods. But in something like this, we can try to control the, a portion of the transportation costs. And if, if that means that a, a, a 40-foot container can carry more goods and, and the cost of the, of the ocean freight is spread out over, over more weight or, or more capacity within the 40-foot container, that's, that's a win for us. If, if that means that, if, if this stays status quo, we don't do anything about it, and they have to bring in containers that are three-quarters full because they don't want to come to Guam and then get, get penalized because of our, our, our weight limits, that, 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 that doesn't do anything for, for saving any of their transportation costs. Or at least keep, either keeping it status quo or, or reducing some of their transportation costs. It's, it's really, it's, it's really on the transportation costs. The cost of the goods, I have no control of that. We have no control of that.
Also, the companies, you would agree, have, have adjusted their inventory to comply with the current law, their trucks and vehicles.
Yes.
Senator, will you allow me to, to
Please, yes, please.
address your question? As a wholesaler, when we bring in a 20-footer, for example, rice, often at times, we never exceed 80,000 pounds. What happens is that on a, on a 20-footer, the, the weight on axles four and five, that's, that's by the door. Because of the suspension, and probably Eddie can speak more on the technical side, that's where we normally get hit with the overweight. We're never, ever over 80,000 pounds. But because of the, the weight limitation on the axles, on ten, on axles four and five, that's where we inevitably get hit. And we've been hit several times. We've, we've had to pay the penalty because our rice, I mean, just, just, just vision, a 20-footer going down the road, and you could see the, 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 the tractor or the trailer at an angle. And all that weight just gets shifted down to where the door is. And we've, what we've done was, we've even had to reduce the weight, the number of sacks of rice, and, and consequently, by reducing the number of, 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 of pounds in the container, we've had to see, we, we saw an increase in our landing costs. I mean, you look at rice, look at jasmine rice, it's, it's not cheap, right? But what I, what I can tell you is that, that with the permit that's been issued by DPW, it allows us to at least carry that weight that normally is, for the containers not normally overweight, it allows us to at least be within that upper limit where we're not exceeding the, the requirements of, 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 of the gross weight, right? So this was the, this, this here is, is the, is the, is the permit. And it tells you what the allowable additional weights we can carry in the container. So for example, rice, normally it would be 34,000 pounds, right? But it allows us to go up to 41,000 pounds. So that's, if you, if you go from, from 41 down to 34,000, that's 7,000 pounds reduced, right? That's about a 14% decrease. I can give you an example. What happens is that when you start reducing the weights in the container, for example, rice, because I'm just using it as an example, a 25-pounder or a 50-pounder, that sack of rice would increase by a factor of 18%. Sugar, a 1 kg or 2 kg bag of sugar, we, we've had to, if, if we had to go and follow the, the current law, the cost of that 1 kg of, of sugar would increase by a factor of 25%. We go to a frozen, a reefer container. In the U.S., there are what they call overweight corridors. And these are, these are, these are for, for, I guess, I guess for, if you wanted to compare, it would be the designated hall roads highways. And a lot, these are areas that they call green zone. And it's where containers are allowed, overweight containers are allowed to traverse that, that specific highway to get to the port, okay? Now, this bill basically mirrors that type of, of, of a setup where the designated hall roads become the overweight corridor for our containers. Because as Eddie said, from, from a maritime perspective, they're not concerned about, you know, the, a, a certain weight, as long as they're able to, to load them in the container, the cranes are able to safely remove them off the ships, right? So a cost of chicken thighs, the cost per pound, if we had to reduce our weight, going from 51,000 pounds to, you know, to 44,000 pounds is what, what normally is required on the federal, the highways in the United States, we would have to decrease the weight by 7,000 pounds or about 14, 14%. The cost of the, of the, of, of, of the chicken thighs would increase by a factor of 21%.
Can you just clarify, what do you mean by if we had to reduce? Because aren't you complying with the current law?
Yes, we are. So that's why we're not, that's why we haven't been able to, you know, because of the permit, we're able to keep that cost. Now, I can't, there are certain things that I can't, that those are the things that I can't control, right? But I, we could certainly control how much we can bring in to the island based on the allowable weights. And I can assure you that at least we don't have to pass on another increase to what, to the retailers and ultimately to the, to the end consumer, you and me.
Can I just answer that? There's, there's a specific thing that I wanted to address on that. What has happened because of the shock of, of the current law when it was first implemented was they, there was no intent at the time for DPW to issue a mass amount of permits. So this, the permits that we're talking about, that we're still able to maintain these weights, were kind of like a memo of understanding that until we resolve this, we figure out what we're going to do, how we're going to address consumer price increases and whatever, that we were going to allow, if it's a small infraction, like he's talking about, only the axle weights of a certain part of the truck. If it's way overweight, gross overweight, or it's way more than maybe 10% overweight on the axles, then DPW would not allow the permit. But because the biggest portion of the problem here is aligning the compliance with the axle weights, or the length, or, you know, some of the other, the choice of vehicles that we carry the containers in, we've decided that the best solution would be to rewrite the laws you see it now. So that will take like 75% of the violations and make them allowable. So the impact truly is not something big that would destroy the roads. The, the, the impact of what the current law is, is affecting specifics of how you measure the load. So like Hermy was saying, it may only be 1,000 pounds, which technically is not very much when you figure where and tear in the road. But of course, continuously, it may be a problem. And that's why we're addressing, trying to reconstruct hall roads, because we want to mitigate the effects on the economy and consumer prices. So it's not like, you know, we're just saying, oh, it's a free-for-all. And that's, that's why Hermy was saying, we're able to maintain that lower price because we issued permits. But of course, the permits cost money. So you, you know, but there's still a small amount. I agree with the director saying that the fines portion of it should be so high that instead of saying, I'm just going to pay the fine, you know, a small amount and just break the law, it should be where I'm going to try to do compliance, such as Hawaiian Rock, such as some of these other companies that are bringing in newer vehicles, such as the compliance even with things like, like EPA emissions. If you find them high enough, they're going to take those older vehicles off and they're going to bring in new vehicles that comply or try to find a way to mitigate for it. And so that, that, that's all, just, just to clarify that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Torres, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank everyone for that very thorough panel discussion, which I think answered many of the afterthoughts that I had about this substitute bill. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Duñez?
This is my, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank the panel for being here today and through the public hearing as well as now. I, I think this is much appreciated, this back and forth, this dialogue. I think maybe for the public's understanding, maybe between Hermy and Eddie. So when we're talking about the hall roads, as I understand it, and I've seen in most of the industrial areas, areas, because of wholesalers and the like, and the way that products are traditionally or for the most part brought in, and warehousing and wholesaling as opposed to distribution, that's why the haul roads are very important, you know, to get that there, because then the loads subsequently are reduced to the interior and tertiary roads with regard to distribution. I think most, if not all, warehousing is within the transportation of most, if not all, haul roads. Can you speak to that?
That's absolutely correct. There's a master plan that most states follow, and it's designed to protect commerce. And it's, as you know, in the United States, we transport commerce on railways, waterways, you know, numerous amounts of different venues. And basically, most places that have heavy industry, let's say mining, forestry, they also have designated haul roads where they can transport their goods to the mill or to the, you know, the manufacturing area. And so, by design, most cities will design it that way, so it doesn't affect passenger car traffic, and yet also provide for direct involvement from the port to maybe a warehousing facility where they break it up and they put it in smaller trucks and they distribute. That's the whole process where most of the wholesalers are doing now. You could see Quality, Luenfeng, MBI, they all will bring the containers to their facility, and then they'll put in smaller delivery trucks. And it, you know, it's the economics of it. A small truck can get to more places, more restaurants and whatever, especially when you consider the infrastructure of Guam, how, especially in Tumon, we got limited areas for them to pull in, drop off and stuff like that, so it makes a lot of sense. So addressing that, this bill basically allows us to kind of think ahead, and we're designing that. If this was a perfect world, like I explained in another testimony, we would have built warehouses at the port, and we've been done with that, you know, simple enough. But because the military owned that for so many years, and we weren't really thinking ahead that far at that time, and we wanted to designate Harmon Field as the main distribution point, we had automatically assumed anything goes between the port and Harmon Field, you know, just to get the products out. So now, we're in this situation where we're trying to be a little bit more responsible and protect that main thoroughfare, marine driving basically, but like he said, the director said, we need to have alternate ways to get the product, right? Especially for the military, where they haul a great amount of stuff from their, from the port to their facilities, commissaries and so forth, and their airports. So that's, you're perfectly correct. That's the whole design of that, and by establishing that, I think that's, we're thinking smart. Thank you.
Yeah, so Director Vince, that's what, I just wanted to make sure that we were on that same mindset, and also with the engineer, that, you know, this is how we can really kind of communicate also with the public, you know, in our development and our engineering and everything going forward, is that this is what we want to do. I mean, you have lanes and specifics for so many different particular issues, but if we drill this down and understand, you know, the basis of the axle weight capability and distribution as well as the construction, then, you know, the development, that's part of this phase, then can understand not only limiting damage, but also for planning purposes. Because I'm sure that a lot of businesses and companies also want to take this into consideration, because by the time they break down the distribution, it just makes more sense for them, you know, then that protects the community and also protects our island and, you know, and our roads for longevity. So I just wanted to get some comments from you on that and the development of rules and regs and the like.
Yes, yes, thank you, Senator. And you do see it. Once the tractor trailers of the main 40 foot containers get to the warehouses, they get distributed by step vans, by cargo vans, you know, and they go out to the smaller streets. It's very, very rare where you see a full tractor trailer with a 40 foot container out in the tertiary roads or even some of the secondary roads. And a lot of that is just plain logistics. It's hard to maneuver in there. You know, I was going to say, Eddie mentioned Hawaiian Rock. Hawaiian Rock did this well over a year ago. Rather than getting assessed down at the fee station, they went and, they bought new trucks that have additional axles to take the load off, right? Their hydraulic axles that take the load off the existing trucks, and it spreads the load, as Ed was saying, on different axles. It's just, it's basic, it's basic math, really. You know, you spread the load among more axles and you have less wear and tear on the roads.
That's all I have for now, Madam Chair. I'll listen as we go along, thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Duennas. Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Director, thank you, Landon. I appreciate the hard work DPW has been doing to you, and I'm excited about all the new roads that, or the roads that you're currently resurfacing. So I appreciate that. I'm happy to hear that the military is more than willing to assist us in hardening these haul roads once we designate it with this bill. So I appreciate the work you've done with this team, Ed and Hermy here and the others. It's a lot of communications that has went on since, I'm sure it started before I got in, since this is back in the 33rd Guam legislature, but I'm glad we've come to this point. And I think we're making it even better for the people of Guam in protecting our roads and even so more for protecting our consumer, our price of goods. My question, and in line with last speaker here, we were talking about breaking it down, and Hermy, you were also speaking about it, you did an excellent public testimony in our public hearing, explaining and actually defining the word haul roads, right? If you can take us, as you did in the public hearing, where, from where you get your goods and in that green zone, and how they pack that, and coming onto the ship and then offloading it on route, I think that's 11, and then going to your route, and how this is affecting you, and how it comes to the end of the day on how much my Irish spring is going to cost me, one more time, please, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Yes, so, a majority of our containers, and last year alone, we brought in, we shipped in 586 containers. I thought, that's quite a bit. The year before, if I'm not mistaken, it was like 400. Last year, we brought in more, and there was obviously, there was a need for more products because people stayed home, and so there was more consumption going on, right? But what happens is our containers, when they're loaded, when, they're typically loaded in an area just within the port of Oakland, and there's an area there that's called the green zone, right? And it's where a lot of businesses, major suppliers would have their distribution center there, and they would bring the products into that, into that area, load the containers, and we can load them, you know, I mean, we can go up as high as 55,000 pounds, right? But the federal standards calls for, if I'm not mistaken, it's 45,000 pounds in the US, so we can go as high as 55,000 pounds. Imagine 55,000 versus 45,000 for a container that has all kinds of frozen goods, from chicken to pork to seafood and all that, right? So it gets loaded, no problem getting onto the ship, because, you know, it's been on, it's been traversing over these, on this overweight corridor. Gets on the ship, gets to Guam, right? And obviously, when it goes through the test facility, right, we're without the test permit, we won't even be, we would have to pay a stiff penalty for the overweight, right? And we do that, and guess what? We don't even, we don't even pass on that penalty to the consumers. We take it on as a cost, but not as a cost passed on to the consumer. Gets offloaded, and my Norwegian brokers, MBI is right up here in Route 8, right by Shop for Less, right? Our distribution center is right there, right? We offload it, right? And of course, products get delivered to all the various accounts, from the mom and pop stores to the, even to the retail, to the major players such as Payless supermarkets, and we also deal with the military. So we sell to the commissaries as well as to the Navy Exchange, right? The problem that we see with the current law is that the axle weights, as it's written on the current law, would prevent us from bringing in the higher weight, and by not bringing in the higher weight, where, as Director Vince mentioned, that the ocean freight would have to be spread over fewer goods as opposed to 55,000 versus 45,000 pounds, right? It's a big difference, and I can assure you that this bill, this bill would do, I think it really strikes a nice balance. It does three things. The cost of goods entering our island is not impacted negatively to the detriment of the end consumer. Number two, the size and weight limitations for the vehicles traveling Guam's highway are updated and modernized. And number three, Guam's highways are protected as containers will only traverse on these designated haul roads. So I, that's why I'm here to support the passage of this bill, because it really strikes a nice balance. And as far as trying to control inflation, this is definitely one way to control inflation, by not, by allowing us to maintain the kind of weights that the DPW has allowed us to do, do so. And with the intent, with the intent that there will be, there will be a section on Route 1 that will be able to allow these containers to traverse without damaging, you know, the roads for the future and for the next 20, 30 years, whatever, right? So I hope that answers your question, Senator.
Thank you. Ed, he was also talking about the axle weight, in his terms, on how he explained that with the company, MBI. Please just highlight that one more time for us, please.
Axle weights are a determination that is using a formula to try to minimize the impact on the roadways. And so, if you really look at the way we're regulating the weights, it's by total vehicle weight, it's by axle weight, by bridge formula, which technically addresses the stress on the bridges, and also pounds per square inch of weight on the tires. So it also tells you that you can't just use any kind of tire to carry these weights, you need to have a wider tire to be able to carry more weight. So I think all these combinations are a way to address all the different concerns of how you're affecting the roadways, the bridges, and also the driveways going in and out, often on the designated haul roads. But because all equipment is different, you know, we don't determine what kind of trailers the containers are put on. It's a shipping company, Matson, APL, so forth. So they basically, because of economics, will decide what kind of containers in general they want. It's up to the trucker to determine whether he can pull that legally, whether it's overweight or whatever, and so he's going to have to adjust his truck too. But the problem we have on Guam, which was a problem inherited from the past, is a lot of these little roads where some of these containers got to go, and it goes to Senator Duennas' question there. When it came to land management and Guam Land Use Commission saying, okay, you can have a warehouse here, you can have a warehouse there, none of that was taken into consideration. There's a bunch of warehouses to mooning where they have to go in the closest lane to median and swing dangerously into a driveway to go down a little skinny road, which is technically just a little village road, just to get into the warehouse facility. That might have been something we should have addressed many years ago when we started doing a master plan for our villages and our highways, but it was never taken into consideration. So the shipping companies, many of them decided 20 foot containers were better because they could put it on a shorter chassis and they can get it in these tight places. That's exactly what Hermy's talking about. When you start trying to compress everything in a short area, now it's going to violate the bridge formula, and now because the equipment might not be totally compatible to spread the weight along, because it's trying to get in a short turn area, now it's going to be in violation on two of the axles on the back because most of the weight is towards the rear. At one time, Guam had container chassis that had a long front section past where the container started, and that kind of helped, but they couldn't get those trailers in some of these places. So the industry said, well, I got all these trailers sitting around, why am I going to have these longer trailers just for a few loads? Let's just standardize it, because we don't want to be down at the port, and the port's the one that decides what chassis a container goes on, and they don't care, they're like, I just stick it on there, that's good enough. That's exactly where we're at. I've been in this industry a long time. And for me to tell Matson or APL how to run their facility, and me to tell Joanne's favorite department how to load chassis on a container chassis, I mean, a container's a container chassis, you know, I'm sure she's running that problem where she tries to tell them how to do operations, and like, boss, no, we didn't have time for that. These are the only available, the ship's right there, we got to get them offloaded because that ship's got to get out of here, it's on the way to Hong Kong. So those are the kind of things we have a problem with, you know? And it's no real fault of one person or one department, it's basically how the industry conducts its operations. So that's where you get those violations. In Hermy's case, like I told him, I said, spend a million dollars and go buy five chassis that have more axles, and we'll work just on the weight law, and you'll pass on all the other ones, the axle and everything else. But then again, you can't use that chassis if he's got to go into a facility that's real tight, or the loading dock is only so far from the roadway because that's the way they designed the building, and you've got the container sticking out on the highway making a nuisance, right? So you got to, you got to consider all those. And the director, you know, here he's left out, well, how do I handle this? And the proper way, right now, is to issue special permits if you need to do things that are out of the norm of the industry. And that's kind of what we're at here, and that's why we kind of had to adjust some of the weights, adjust, at one time, we were looking at adjusting length of chassis, and then the length of the chassis, because of the design, even on Route 8 of the tri intersection, the way they designed that roadway because of real estate, you couldn't really take a long swing with an extra extended permitted chassis. So then we threw that out of the books, said, no, it's too dangerous, never mind. Let Vince issue them a special permit, let him require them to have an escort or whatever it might take to get them through that intersection. And I think that was the smartest way. And that's how we've, that's one of the reasons why it's taken so long to do this, is because everybody's got an idea, but you kind of got to compromise here. And so during this process, at this time, it took so long to come up with this draft bill, we had to do a number of compromises, and we had to, I mean, we even went out and measured the roadways, the intersections, measured the radius of the driveways, that's how far we got along. I don't know if you remember the problem we had with the newly constructed tri intersection there, Route 8, 10 and 16? It took some damage there after it was reconstructed. So on an engineering standpoint, we had to go back and look at it. Was it a problem with a friction course? Was it a problem with a base? Was it a design issue because it was too tight of a radius? You know, there was a number of things we had to look at. Then we had to look for solutions. And those could all be solved by a myriad of things in combination, like improving the friction surface, maybe thickening it, maybe changing the radius so the trucks don't have to turn such a tight angle there. And so, those are the kind of problems that DPW and their consulting engineer goes through constantly. Now, on our side, on the private sector, we look at that because, you know, tires aren't cheap, and we're tearing them up, and now we've got a problem of, after we're done with them, their useful life, what do we do with them? You know, it's expensive to get rid of tires, to get them recycled. And right now, the recycling efforts are too expensive to recycle tires, you know? It's hard to make crumbs, it's expensive, it's even expensive to do, you know, composting. So the private industry is constantly looking for solutions to try to mitigate things and try to comply, and that's where we're at here, is we don't want to turn up And that's where we're at here is we don't want to tear up the highways, we don't want to tear up our, our equipment, we don't want to be a safety hazard by having longer chassis or turning into streets. Some facilities have even moved because of that. They can't get in. Look at, look at Harmon Field. The wholesalers over there paved the road on their own, basically reconstructed some of the driveways and the turns, because liability wise, they may kill somebody, they may also damage their equipment, which some of their equipment's brand new. When, when we go to amortize our equipment and we look at how many years the useful life is, you know, we calculate that all. And that's part of the calculation for consumer goods. We look at what it costs us. How much does it cost for tires? How much does it cost in repairs to our suspension? Even just the chassis, how much does it cost to repair the springs in the back of the chassis because they were overweight? They were designed for only 34,000 pounds versus 40,000 pounds. So that's why even in there, it gives a, a specific deal that it says, or the manufacturer's capacity. Because you want to be as, as close to the specifics as you can, so that way the whole industry is complying. So that way the, the roads don't get beat up. Everybody knows, you guys in, with regular cars, how much does it cost to get alignment? How much does it cost to change your tire when you hit a pothole? You know? This DPW, are they liable to pay for those? Absolutely not. You know, it's part of the road hazard, right? So this is same on our private enterprise side. We've got to, we've got to take those into consideration. If you improve the highways, these haul roads are perfect, our tires last longer, sure, maybe we can agree to lower the price, because then our cost came down. But until that time, you hit that sweet spot of what it costs to perform goods and services, we can't reduce anything. The only thing that will likely cause a reduction in prices is competition. And you know that if your prices for hauling these things because of the change of the law or whatever, uh, allows your costs to go down, your competitors going to look at that and says, this profit margin's too high, I'm going to get in that business because I want some of that. And that's why a lot of big corporations diversify. They try to find that sweet spot and stay in competitive areas and some companies like myself, before I semi-retired, we would look for projects that we made the highest profit You know, we, we juggle every year with the IRS and with you guys with taxes, we would like to see a reduction of the DPT, maybe, uh, like some states do, the sales tax come down, taxes on, on groceries, taxes on medicine, taxes on even maybe health insurance. Many businesses, I don't know if you've been watching, but many businesses now limit their amount of hours so they can meet the federal law and not have to provide healthcare. Many of them don't provide healthcare if they meet a certain standard. What does that do for the people of Guam? Anybody can't afford healthcare, we don't turn them away at GMH, we got to pay for that. Somebody's got to pay for it, taxpayer. So maybe that's another law, you know? But those are the sweet spots that in an economy like Guam, because we're so isolated for everything, we got to kind of manage it and try to find the best way to keep taxes coming in by keeping more workers working, by moving that dollar more spots along the way, by keeping those leaks to go off island because a foreign corporation came in and bought out a local corporation. So now a lot of the profits are going off island. So going back to all this, that's why I said, we want to bring back tourism. This is one way. We got to, we got to keep the cost down because if the tourists can't eat at a decent price, of course, what happens? We can't compete with another destination.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
That was very helpful. And Hermy, of course, your trucks are driving on the far right-hand lane for the, it's just not called a haul road right now, but that's the designated haul road.
Yes.
And Ed, through your, your hard work here, working with the director, we're basically putting and correcting, uh, the original public law 33106 to say, we're going to have a haul road. This haul road is going to be reinforced. We're fortunate with the military that they must do this for their big trucks and equipment as well. Mr. Director, I appreciate the, the breakdown on how we can increase our weights for companies like Hermy as well, as these things get going, as the roads are built with the federal government. And I know you're working as hard as possible to make it happen and, and, and I appreciate that from all your hard team or all your hard work at, at DPW with your, your team there and Landon as well. Uh, so, uh, I, I'd like to, I'm hoping for a, a great supportive majority here of, of my senators, understanding this clear definition of, by this team. So I want to thank you on this first round. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Moylan. We will take a brief recess at this time to reset the live stream and then come back for the second round of questions.